The May fourteenth, twenty twenty four Bel Air Town Hall meeting is now in session. It is now four thirty P M. And do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Krantz.
This is for approval of tonight's agenda. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The agenda is approved.
And we have all the commissioners present except for Commissioner Chismar who may be calling in. There we go. Maybe he's watching.
I knew we were talking about him.
Hello, hello?
Hello, Michael, this is Chismar.
Oh, there we go.
All right, there we go.
Can all hear you? Can you hear us okay?
Yep, here you are.
All right, terrific. And we have Commissioner Chismar present via telephone. Um, the first item on our agenda was a presentation from BG and E Cristiano Quijano, but I do not see him here.
Madam Chair, I'm striking out with presentations in the last several weeks. Um, we actually, this was a request, Commissioner Rutledge and I spoke about having the gentleman come make a presentation on their external affairs.
I remember.
Um, I actually, last week, I followed up with an email. He confirmed he would be here. So I'm hoping, uh, but at this point, madam, we move on.
Maybe he's been delayed by traffic and we'll work him in later if he does appear.
I have warned everybody about the ninety-five traffic, you know?
They don't believe you.
They don't believe you, but
They don't believe you.
But I apologize, ma'am, but, um, apparently not here.
Well, if he shows up, we'll work him in and then we are on to the next item on our agenda, which is the town administrator's report, Mr. Hopkins.
I do not have one that he, ma'am, thank you.
There you go. We are moving through this agenda with lightning speed. Expediously. The tentative agenda for Monday's town meeting, the first item on our agenda will be the presentation of a, of a promotion to Jessica Fiedler, to Police Communications Operator Two. Chief, anything you want to add to that?
No, it's, uh, really is the promotion is, uh, they get, they start a PCO one and then after the two years of successful performance.
Do you have your microphone on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, after two years of performance at the position of PCO one, then they automatically get promoted to PCO two. So, um, family members will be here and we should have, has the bio been sent to you already?
I do have that.
Oh, good.
And I have printed it out and put it with my materials for Monday's meeting, so I will come prepared.
Excellent. So we'll just do the typical protocol and present and then, uh, have the family go next door.
Photo ops.
Yep.
All right, great. Sounds terrific.
Thank you.
Next would be the Historic Preservation Commission's poster contest results.
That would be me.
That would be Mr. Small.
Um, the, um, for those of you who have not been here for that, uh, it's the results of, um, submissions by Upset Wakefield, uh, and two other elementary schools to, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission on, on, uh, the, uh, poster contest. Uh, what they do is they pick out a, um, historic building in town and they draw that historic building. And then the HPC, uh, reviews and, and ranks them, gives the, you know, the first, second, third, and then also honorable mentions. The, um, uh, way that'll work is there's also a presentation by, um, by assume, I assume Commissioner Rutledge to the Historic Preservation Commission for Historic Preservation Month. That's a proclamation. And then, uh, the HPC will present to the kids, um, all of their different poster contest winners and then some prizes that are associated with those. It takes a little while, but, uh, then they will also then retire into the community room, uh, and have little
Little reception.
Yeah.
I, I remember it from last year. I think there were about twelve
Yes.
posters that were really, you know, like amazingly wonderful. Um, they're really some talented kids. I'm looking forward to seeing this year's. Anyone else have any comments, questions?
So Kevin, there, um, I have one. They're going to the community room?
Yes.
Did Kim, is there going to be a conflict?
We coordinated with Kim because I think she's going downstairs to the
She's moving the roll breaker. Gotcha. Okay. All right.
If Kim is on it, I know it'll all work out well. Next on our agenda next week will be the public hearing for Resolution twelve twenty-eight dash twenty-four, the fiscal year twenty twenty-five tentative budget. Ms. Moody?
Sure. Uh, just a couple of quick, um, really logistics. Um, so this will be the public hearing on the tentative budget. Um, I'll have a, the presentation will be on the two enterprise funds, so the sewer and the parking fund as well as the special revenue. Um, while the public hearing can be any, on anything in the budget, I will not be doing a presentation or really even presenting anything to you all on the general fund, just those three funds. So that's the tentative portion of it. And then that's closed and then, um, the final budget, uh, will include any budget amendments that we discuss this evening and I'll have all those laid out with your, with your motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Moody, comments? Uh, new business will do Resolution twelve twenty-nine dash twenty-four fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the final budget. Ms. Moody?
Uh, yeah, I don't have anything further than that.
Okay. I didn't think so, but just to check.
Yep, no worries.
Any, any questions from the commissioners? All right. Then we will have under new business next week accepted of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit. Ms. Moody?
Yes, that's me too. You're gonna be hearing a lot from me tonight, I think. Um, so yeah, the, um, the fiscal year twenty-three budget, um, is, was completed at the end of April. Um, it was late this year. Um, it was delayed a couple of times. Uh, I've had, um, shortage of staff twice um, in the last, uh, six months or so. Um, so the audit was complete. It was good. Um, again, another one in a, in a series of good audits. Our auditing firm is in, we're in the second year of a three-year contract with them, SBN Company. Uh, we did not have any major internal control issues or deficiencies. We had to have a, um, it's not exactly a single audit, which relates to federal funding, but because we have ARPA, they had to do, um, a, a, a lower or a, a less of a single audit. Um, there were no issues with that, um, either. The town has never had a single audit done because we don't receive more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal money. Um, ARPA threw us into that, but luckily the, the Treasury viewed it as, well, if you were one of those jurisdictions that this was an anomaly, they weren't making you go through the rigmarole of the whole single audit, which also costs a lot more money to have your auditors perform that. So again, no issues there, um, as well. Um, the excess of revenues over expenditures in that fiscal year was one million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. Um, so a fairly significant overage, which I'm going to go over in a moment. Um, the difference was really mainly due to receiving more in revenues. Um, we do, uh, have a healthy general fund, unassigned fund balance. Uh, we were able to add about a hundred and nine thousand dollars to that account. So we're sitting at two million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, uh, so a good level, uh, with accounting standards. Um, we transferred, I'm going to throw a lot of numbers at you. Um, we transferred about thirty thousand dollars to our stormwater management reserve. Um, the balance is three hundred and one thousand dollars in that reserve. We transferred about twenty-nine thousand dollars to our stabilization reserve, which was the reserve that we started right after COVID for, um, really emergency use only. So significant snowstorms, natural disasters, catastrophes, basically. Um, so the balance in there is, um, one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand. The one I think we're most interested in, uh, really with the conversations that we've been having is the capital reserve. So we transferred one million, sixty-four thousand dollars into the capital reserve with a ending balance of four million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then we utilized eighty-seven thousand, six hundred for, um, to pay leave payouts in our leave payout reserve, but we also transferred two hundred and forty-eight thousand into that reserve. So we're sitting at the maximum amount allowed in that reserve of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, so now to kind of get into a little bit, again, this is really high, high level, um, not really into the nitty-gritty. But, um, as I mentioned, um, excess revenues over expenditures was about a million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. Uh, actual revenues were more than budgeted revenues, uh, by one million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand. Uh, the main reason for that was our state shared income taxes, which we've talked about during this budget session. Um, that came in at seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars over budget. Uh, we did receive a one-time influx of income tax, um, of three hundred thousand dollars, which was an anomaly. Um, again, the, the state really doesn't give you any kind of details. They'll just tell you, well, that's, that was due to one taxpayer. They, they won't tell you anything else. Um, so, uh, three hundred thousand of that seven thirty-five was, was due to one time. And then we received, again, if you all remember from our discussions, we receive, um, our last couple of chunks of money at the end of June and at the end of August. And so the, the one at the end of June was higher than anticipated and so was the end of August. Um, besides that, we received fifty-seven thousand dollars in more in real property taxes, twenty-seven thousand in public utility and twenty-five thousand more in business corps. Um, our state aid, state police aid was forty-three thousand dollars more than budget. This is the one state shared, um, where you, this, this state will not provide you any type of estimate. So the, you know, the best that you can do is at least budget what you budgeted the previous year. Um, and while their first three quarterly payments are exactly the same in a fiscal year, they use that last fourth quarter to true up. So you, you can't count on your fourth quarter being exactly what your first three quarters are either. So again, all, all good news. It's just things we didn't anticipate. Um, our equipment vehicle sale proceeds were sixty thousand dollars, uh, more than, than budgeted. We sold, um, several vehicles, uh, at the end of the fiscal year. You just don't know what their value is going to be. Um, they all came in higher, obviously, as well as we had some, um, issues with not getting our vehicles in timely. Uh, so they were pushed from twenty-two to twenty-three, which raised the amount of revenue that you were going to receive in twenty-three. I've talked about investment income a lot throughout this budget and it impacted twenty-three as well. Um, as much as I tried to pinpoint what that number was going to be, I was ninety-eight thousand dollars shy. So again, good, good news. I'd rather be that way than the other way. But it just goes to show you what our investments are doing for the town in this type of interest environment. Um, and then lastly, we recognized more ARPA monies than we anticipated, about a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So this works a little different when it comes to accounting standards. While we received all of the ARPA monies, you don't recognize it. So accounting regulations don't allow you to recognize revenue until you have earned it, which means you've spent it. So you have matching revenues and expenses. So all the ARPA money that we've received sits in a deferred revenue account on the balance sheet as a liability. And then as we recognize that deferred revenue, it moves from a liability on the balance sheet to revenue. And it can only do that when you are expending the funds. So we thought we were only going to expend X and we expended more than that, which meant we recognized more revenue. I hope that makes sense. Um, so that's, that's the reasoning for the, for the revenues. On the expense side, um, actual expenditures were less than budgeted expenditures by about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Um, ninety thousand dollars savings in general government, two hundred and five thousand in police, two hundred and three thousand in public works. But we also spent more than budgeted in the town hall PD construction account of about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So when you factor all those together, that gets you your two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars less than budgeted. Um, but I did want to point out that of the four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar gross savings, the first three savings that I mentioned, um, three hundred and twenty-four was due to salaries and benefits. So, you know, our vacancies, that, that really tells, tells the tale. Um, there are some other reasons. There was, uh, some unused planning, operating expenses, some unused street operating construction expenses. And the twenty-nine thousand that was unused stormwater management went in back into the reserve account. Um, so on to the parking, um, and sewer fund. The parking fund showed a net loss in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy. Um, we have continued to see a loss in that fund, um, really since COVID. Um, you know, people aren't parking like they used to. They're not using the meters. They're, uh, working remotely, so our lease fees are down, et cetera. Um, so our, in this case, our parking fines were due, were down significantly from what was budgeted. Uh, the sewer fund also showed a net loss, um, which is unusual in this, in this fund. Uh, the net loss was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven ninety-one, but the, the sole reason for that was our Harford County sewer bulk rate, um, from Harford County was a lot more than we expected it to be. I mean, this was the year it went up a dollar eight. Um, you know, the rate went up a dollar eight. We just didn't see that coming in at all, nor there was, there's no way we could have. So to get away with at least a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar loss, I think is, is, is pretty good. We, we decided we did not want to increase our sewer rate. Um, you know, we didn't want to bear that burden onto the, onto the taxpayers. We would just eat it, so to speak. Um, so it's, again, these, these two funds showed net losses. We, we do, we are, and we continue to have to keep an eye on the parking fund because it is continuing to lose money every single fiscal year. Sewer fund, um, you know, we, we are, I'm going to talk about that in a few moments. We did see another rate increase from Harford County in our bulk rate, but it was not a dollar eight, thank goodness. So, um, we just need to keep an eye on it though. Both still healthy, just have to keep a watch. Um, with regard to the town's three fiduciary funds, so this is the civilian pension, the sworn officers pension, as well as the OPEB. Um, good news on all of these. Uh, they all showed a positive change in net position of, um, eight hundred thousand for civilian, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand for sworn and seventy-six thousand for OPED. And as you might expect, all were due to investment gains. So the market, the market was good. Uh, so we will, um, I will email you all the, the audit report and we will also include it on the town's, uh, website. But this will be on the agenda for, um, Monday night to accept the twenty-three audit. I know there was a lot of numbers, guys, sorry. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? All right. And next, Harford County, the Town of Bel Air Sewer Service Addendum. Ms. Moody's issue again?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so this past, uh, towards the end of December, we received a proposed revision in the sewer user charge from Harford County. Um, this is the one which the county levies the town as a bulk customer and user of its sewer transmission and treatment facilities. It goes back to a nineteen eighty-eight sewer agreement, um, which requires that each annual change in the user charge be adopted by an addendum by both the county and the town. Um, the town did, we, I recently received the addendum from Harford County's Law Department. Uh, we've reviewed it. Uh, no substantial changes other than the, the dollars. Um, so the new user charge is five dollars and twenty-six cents per thousand gallons, up from four dollars and eighty-five cents or a forty-one cent increase. The E and R fee of seventeen cents for each thousand gallons was a reduction of one cent from eighteen cents. Um, the, uh, Public Works Department, as well as my department, we do review all the supporting data that, um, sewer, the Harford County Sewer Department does provide us. So we go through it with a fine-tooth comb, um, making sure that, you know, nothing stands out. Everything that is included in this, um, should be according to the eighty-eight agreement. Um, we generally, um, every year, I think I sent back about twenty-six questions for them to review and get supporting documentation back. So we, we definitely don't take what they give us for granted. Um, we both review it from our own perspective departments. Um, there was nothing found this year that was an anomaly or, or should be addressed that would have changed the rate. Um, so the staff will, um, recommend the approval of the addendum on Monday night.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Moody on this one? Fascinating topic of the Sewer Service Addendum. All right. Next, six, the staffing update, Mr. Krantz? Term expiration dates?
Oh, I do have the, uh, spreadsheet to pass around here, if you don't mind taking one. And we did expand the number. We had just done like ninety days out, but we've done through the end of the year now. So you can kind of see the vacancies on, uh, we still have a vacancy in the Board of Ethics, uh, Historic Preservation, Board of Building Appeals. And, uh, Ms. Dolan will be coming up in September, her term on the Board of Ethics. We have, uh, ECDC, Economic and Community Development Commission, uh, coming due in September. So you, you can see the list going there. So we have, uh, a few appointments that'll be coming up. Individuals potentially eligible for a free appointment or for the board to, uh, make new appointments.
And good news on the Board of Ethics. I think I have someone who may be interested in serving in that capacity. Um, he actually returned my call as we started the meeting, so I will speak to him and see if he is interested.
Excellent. Thank you. As far as staffing for the town goes, we are still accepting applications, um, for police and dispatcher. I think that job is about to end. Uh, we have an active position for a network, a computer network support specialist that is also out there. And, uh, we may be posting a job here in the next day or two for, uh, to supplement our event staff with the closing of the Richland Ballroom. Our Bel Air Armory has been inundated with phone calls. And just in anticipation, if we do have an uptick in, uh, rentals, we're going to want to have an extra, uh, part-time event staffer on hand. So we may end up posting for that here shortly. There'll stay, there'll be no change to the budget. It'll just be a additional person in case we have coverage issues.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Krantz on, where we stand on staffing? Okay. Next is the calendar. I know we've all just been, uh, received a new calendar that was printed out recently. Um, I had one calendar item, Mr. Krantz, that did occur to me. I remember when, um, Bel Air Elementary School had their Patriot Program. They said they were going to have a walking tour of downtown Bel Air. I believe it was on May the twenty-eighth, which is not on our calendar and they usually stop by Town Hall. So I was wondering if you, if we've heard from them and if not, maybe somebody could reach out and if they're coming, we, we need to know that they're coming so we can
That would be very helpful.
Be prepared for them.
Okay.
But I, I did not see that on the calendar. The other calendar item that I, I recall seeing is MML, Maryland Municipal League, um, needs anything in the way of legislation that the municipalities would like them to pursue by, I believe it was the end of May and it's the middle of May. So if any staff members are aware of anything legislatively that's needed in Annapolis or any of the commissioners are aware, um, it's getting pretty close. They do accept it by email, so we won't lose any mailing time, but just to have on our, our radar. And I know we are going to pursue local legislation only for the Historic Preservation Commission, so that, that does not have a May, end of May due date.
Madam Chair, can I try, Commissioner Taylor?
Oh, Madam Chair, what came to us late today is the seventeenth is the bike to work for the county. Um, in your inboxes, uh, they had a change of staff, so they were delaying getting the request for the proclamations out. But, um, if any of the commissioners are available on the seventeenth at seven-thirty in the morning to present that, along with, uh, I, I think it's, um, County Executive Casely who does theirs in the morning time. You don't have to ride a bike.
That, that makes me feel better. I, I, I am available at seven-thirty if no one else is available at seven-thirty. But, you know, under, since I recently had that tumble, I'm like, no bikes for me right now, right?
Anyway, so it's in your inbox. If you could let us know, we'll RSVP.
Great.
Thank you.
I didn't actually see, and I, we signed, I know there was a proclamation there. Of course, Commissioner Chismar won't be here to sign it, so I don't know how you want to handle that.
We have our ways.
I thought you did. But it did, it did occur, yes. It's not, I'm not, I'm concerned about mortgage applications. Proclamations are okay. So there's that. Um, but other than that, I will show up, but I didn't see anything. Do we have a formal invitation we need to respond to?
No.
Okay.
This, they, I asked the same question. They had a change of staff, apparently, so everything was delayed. Uh, as you recall, I had sent out an advance notice because I anticipated this.
Yes, and I put it on my calendar. I was aware of it.
But we, they just called us this morning and we just emailed you all, uh, earlier this afternoon.
Okay. Then I haven't seen the email.
No, no official invitation per se, just, um, they ask for a proclamation, which usually comes accompanied by a commissioner.
And, and it will. Do we need to let them know that somebody is coming?
We'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure it was done and if I needed to do it, I would take care of it. So, okay, great. Any other calendar items?
I will try to be there with you, uh, and afterwards make my way over to the Garden Mart.
That's, that's what's on my calendar for a much more reasonable hour that I'm really looking forward to.
It'll be a very exciting morning in Bel Air.
It will be. All right. Anything else? All right, miscellaneous. I do have actually one contribution under miscellaneous. Today, MML had a Lunch and Learn Zoom series, so I did, um, participate in that. It's recorded. If you want to listen to it, it's about thirty minutes long. But basically, Mr. Krantz should get in sometime in the next week or so, two usernames and two passwords. All of the elected officials share one username and one password, which is just anathema to computer rules usually, but, um, and then the staff will all get a one username and one password to share as well. And there, I think the reason I'm not particularly concerned about security is what is going to be is a digital resource library. They have scanned a number of their documents in so that if anybody wanted to look at, uh, what another jurisdiction has done, positions MML has taken, old legislation, whatever, you can view it and you can email it. It's a free member benefit. Um, and multiple people can also access it, access it at the same time. So all five commissioners can be in there at the same time and it won't be a problem. But I, I think it is like a really terrific idea, um, that they had. They're partly doing it because they moved to smaller quarters, uh, and it's expensive to have the square footage to store all that stuff. So they are going, they are shredding, um, anything that can be shredded. Obviously, some documents will not be shredded. They'll be kept in their original format. But it'll be a great resource for us to go take a look at things if we're interested in, in learning all there is to know about, you know, bike to work day or, you know, flower marts around. Flower Mart's Around the State, or whatever else they, they've got in there. So I'm, I'm really, um, happy to see that they did that and anxious to like see what kind of material is in there. They don't have everything in there. It's an ongoing project, but they have enough that they're gonna start up the digital library access for all of us, so I'm, I'm happy about that.
Um, I also have one other thing I just noticed. Um, Mike, if you can take the, uh, public meeting with S, S H A on the third and fourth of June, and put it on the twentieth and twenty-first of June. That is a change from State Highway, they can't make the third and fourth.
The twentieth and the twenty-first?
Correct. In addition, uh, the town is hoping to piggyback on that with our bicycle pedestrian plan initiative, so we'll probably be somewhat in the afternoon talking about that. They kind of marry each other as far as our initiatives go.
Thanks for letting us know so we can change that calendar. Anyone have anything else to add under miscellaneous?
Madam Chair, just one more thing with the calendar, since you flipped us to June. Um, the, uh, Juneteenth observance on the nineteenth of June, uh, with our offices being closed, cultural arts will vote tomorrow at their meeting on when to reschedule that meeting. Um, as soon as they have agreed on a new date, we will get that posted to the calendar and also changed on your commissioner's calendar.
Great, but it, it will definitely be canceled on June the nineteenth.
It will be rescheduled, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else under calendar or miscellaneous? Or commissioners' comments? All right. In that case, we begin the budget again with fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, the budget discussion. First, are we having a presentation from the Harford County Education Foundation?
So, I, I, it's tough to know when we're gonna start the, the budget end of, uh, portion of the meeting, so, um, I scheduled them for five-thirty and five-forty-five. Um, I think it's not quite that time, so we can just move into the enterprise funds and when they get here. If that's okay with everyone? Okay. Um, so we'll start on the sewer fund, uh, then, which is on, starts on page two-hundred. Um, Steve and I have always tag teamed this over the, the years, because we both have a portion of, um, both of these enterprise funds, so I'm gonna review the revenues with you in sewer and a few of the expenses, and then I'll pass it all over to Steve, who it looks like he's got a presentation, PowerPoint presentation for, for you all. So, um, alrighty. So I'm gonna be working from page two-oh-two, um, and as you all can imagine, in the sewer fund, um, it is funded through really one source, main source of revenue, which is the sewer service charges. Um, the account does reflect a base charge for all customers based on the meter size, as well as a sewer rate increase from seven dollars to seven dollars and twenty-nine cents per thousand gallons. This would be effective July one of twenty-twenty-four. Um, we do have within the town code, um, an automatic CPI adjustment, um, so that it doesn't require a code change every time we, we, uh, change for this purpose. If you all wanted to increase the sewer rate, um, for something other than the CPI, or in addition to the CPI, then we would have to go through a, a code or an ordinance change. Um, but for now, we're just recommending that the, um, the rate be increased by the CPI. We use December of the previous year, um, that's consistent with what we've done in past years. Um, the CPI index change was four-point-one percent at that point in time. Um, the projection is based on the previous year's metered water readings from both Maryland American and Harford County. Um, it does include ten flat-rate customers as well, and we're estimating that budget to be, um, two million eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The other revenue, um, account oh-one-hundred and oh-three-oh-two, um, includes several different types of revenues. So the first one is, we are, um, we have a charge for our advertising during tax sale, um, which we're in, currently in right, right now, we're in the tax sale process. Um, so those advertising costs, um, that, uh, we bring in from those who are advertised will be, um, deposited into this account. We have plan review fees that are in this account, which, um, Department of Public Works takes care of. Um, we have a little bit of interest on our delinquent user benefit accounts. Um, but we also receive back a five percent reimbursement from the state for the town's bay restoration fee administrative costs. So we pay that to the state on a quarterly basis, and they allow us to maintain five percent, um, uh, on a quarterly basis. So in total, that accounts, um, almost twenty-five thousand. Our utility locator fee, um, I think this may be the third fiscal year, um, that we've been charging this fee. Um, so this account reflects charging a missed utility mark-out charge. It's thirty-five dollars for new markings and fifteen dollars for remarks. Um, and the estimated budget, uh, really based on history, is twenty-three thousand two fifty-five. Um, of course, we have a line item in here for ARPA.
Lisa?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you, um, explain what the sentence under utility locator fee, the town does not charge, charge homeowners or for clear no conflict? What that means?
Yes, and I'm actually gonna ask Steve if he would comment on that.
Basically, the town does not, um, charge resident to people for us to mark their projects and their property.
And is that what the, for clear no conflict part means as well?
Yeah.
Um, oh, sorry, Steve.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
When we, when we instigated this project proposal, I don't know, probably three or four years ago when we initiated this, uh, we just felt that, you know, residents deserve a break on, on us coming out and, and locating the sewer on their property and so forth, when they have little projects to dig. So at that time, it was made to be a decision that residential's would not have to be, uh, paying this fee, but definitely commercial units would have to do so. Thank you.
So the ARPA line item, um, we all have talked about that, uh, throughout the budget process of three million four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. Um, our connection fees, which is account, um, oh-three-oh-five-oh-one-hundred, um, that's basically a wash, so to speak. So you see that the budget is three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, so this is something that we collect for the county. Um, we do not keep any of it. Um, so we collect it and remit it to the county. Um, it's based on new sewer connections into the town's system. Um, and we're estimating that, I think, a bit higher this coming fiscal year than in the past, based on the potential for the new construction, uh, for Hickory Flats. The user benefit fees work very similar to the connection fees. This is a pass-through. Um, what we collect, we pass through right to the, to the county. We do not keep any of it, nor do we have any administrative fees with either one of these. Um, the user benefit fees, um, they're billed, the, the first ones that are billed in twenty-five, um, were for the connections in fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, they are for, um, twenty-five billing years, so once you pay your first one, you've got twenty-four more years to pay it. Um, it's thirty-five dollars per a connection group. Um, and it just depends on, uh, the calculation that Public Works, uh, does as to how many connections you have within the, within the system. It stays with the house, too, so if you were to sell your property, you as the homeowner, as the seller, aren't responsible for paying it off. It would be transferred to the, to the, to the buyer. And again, it's a pass-through, so for both of these, what you see in the revenue side is what you're gonna see on the expense side. Any questions on revenues? Okay. So we're gonna move to expense then. Um, I'm gonna start on page two-eleven with account oh-two-one-five, which is our insurance account. Um, again, this is through legit, just like we talked about in the general fund. Um, this covers the costs of the insurance for our three vehicles, our nine pumping stations, our no-fault insurance in relation to our sewer backups, and really any other insurance claims for the sewer backups, um, are included here. Um, we do have a preliminary twelve percent rate increase, uh, for a budget of eleven thousand one sixteen. Um, I've talked about the con, the connection payments, that's account oh-three-hundred. Um, and account oh-three-oh-one are Harford County charges, uh, that's the agenda item that I discussed previously. Um, this one is extremely difficult to budget for, as you can imagine. I mean, we went from a dollar-eight increase where the previous fiscal year, we had a rate decrease. So we went from a rate decrease to a dollar-eight increase to forty-one cent increase. It's all over the board. Um, so you're really taking a stab in the dark, uh, with this, so, um, you know, we'll see where it all falls out. But, but right now, we have, uh, one million nine-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars budgeted. On page two-twelve, um, account oh-three-eight-one, again, um, same as the user benefit fee. Uh, money's coming in that I mentioned in the revenues. Um, account oh-five-fifty is the processing fees, so very similar to the, um, processing fees in my department with regard to the real estate taxes. Um, we also outsource the printing and mailing of our utility bills, same, same company. So we, um, we have about thirty thousand utility bills throughout the, the fiscal year. So this includes the, the paper, the envelopes, the postage, the mailing, um, the processing, and it is a budget of twenty-six thousand two eighty. On page two-thirteen, in the miscellaneous account, uh, oh-seven-hundred. Again, similar to what you'll see in the general fund in that miscellaneous or other account. Um, we've housed a three-point-five percent cost of living increase for our two sewer employees, um, that equates to eight thousand fifty dollars. Um, so we have that here, as well as just two thousand dollars in unexpected expenses for something that may not just fall into one of these other accounts. Account oh-nine-oh-three is debt service, um, on our, um, John Carroll Sewer Main. Um, the budget is only fifty-five dollars, because you want to remember, in, in enterprise funds, um, you're only gonna see interest as an expense, because the principal goes against your loan, which is a liability on your balance sheet. So you're not gonna see principal as an expense, only interest. But we do list it here so that you can see that, um, we are making, uh, almost a ninety-four-hundred-dollar principal payment. Um, so that coupled with the fifty-five-dollar expense, will actually pay off this debt in October, so the fiscal year twenty-five. The debt service, uh, for the sewer system capital improvement plan, which is oh-nine-oh-five, um, again, works, um, just the same, a hundred-and-seventy-nine-dollar payment in interest, but almost a twenty-three-thousand-dollar payment in principal. Um, we will also pay this debt off in fiscal year twenty-five in March. Oh-nine-oh-six, um, now this is all debt service for inflow and infiltration, uh, projects. There are three separate projects that we borrowed money for, one in fiscal year thirteen, one in fiscal year fifteen, and one in fiscal year seventeen. Uh, the first bullet there, um, we will pay off this debt, um, in fiscal year twenty-five. Um, about twenty-seven thousand four hundred is the principal amount on this, with two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars being interest. The second bullet, uh, again, we will pay off in fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, a hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars is the interest, while twenty-two thousand one thirty-five is principal. And the last one, um, we will not pay off in fiscal year twenty-five. Um, but we're paying a forty-thousand-dollar principal amount with two thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars in expenses. And then lastly, on page two-fifteen, uh, two accounts to highlight. The first one is, uh, transfer to general fund, which is account a-thousand-and-three. Um, you've heard me talk about, when we reviewed the general fund revenues, uh, the monies that are owed back to the general fund for personnel costs, overhead costs, and benefit costs that are attributable to the sewer fund. Um, the, in total, that equates to four-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars. Now, sewer fund doesn't write the general fund a check. It's just a transfer, and you have what we call due-tos and due-froms in governmental accounting. So this just increases the amount that the, the sewer fund owes the, the general fund on the balance sheet. Um, there's just no transfer of cash, but you still show it as an expense in the sewer fund and as revenue in the general fund. And the calculation for that is on pages two-sixteen through two-eighteen. So you can see, like on two-seventeen, you can see the allocation of the, the different personnel and their percentages. Um, we look at this twice a year, once for the budget. Um, everyone, each department looks at this lists and, um, you know, their percentage, and make sure that it's still fairly in line. Um, we all don't keep a percentage track of our time in each one of these enterprise funds, that would be quite cumbersome. But, you know, just in general, um, I think we all have been doing this long enough, we know what, what approximate percentage of our time is going to the fund. And then on page two-eighteen, you'll see the different building overhead categories, um, that make up the, the total amount that is a proration um, on, on page two-sixteen. Any questions with that?
A question going back to the Harford County charges.
Sure.
Uh, to the best of your ability, can you speak to how Harford County, who in Harford County government decides those changes and how they decide them?
You mean with the, with regard to the bulk rate?
Yes.
It's all based on the nineteen eighty-eight agreement.
Okay.
So they follow that, uh, um, agreement with the, the different divisions of the sewer and operating, the, the water and sewer departments. Um, so it is very detailed in that nineteen eighty-eight agreement that, um, the sod-run department is, I think, a hundred percent included, but water and sewer administration may only be fifty percent included. So that's one of the things that we make sure is, you know, again, we've been doing this long enough, we take that operating agreement and make sure that the percentages match the agreement on the documentation that they're giving us. And there isn't any kind of extraneous, um, expenses that we might question, say, hmm, I don't know what that is, and it looks like you may have added it. Um, we've had those questions in the past. Um, so really, the eighty-eight agreement dictates that rate.
And so do we just not have sufficient input data to make a educated guess about what that fluctuation will be?
No, we really don't, because it's all based on Harford County's expenses.
Okay.
And it's based on their audited expenses. We had, um, I'm pretty sure Steve was involved in this, but we've had meetings with them um, i- in the past. We've tried to come up with suggestions for them to make it easier for us to budget and to estimate this. We've asked for preliminary information. We've asked for, could you, could you give it to us quarterly or semi-annually, or something that would, uh, provide us with better documentation, more timely documentation, and we went round and round on that, and basically they got a no. Um, we're not, we, we can't do that for you. Um, so, I mean, we're, we're stuck. We don't get the rate from, from them until at least six months, we're already in the fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it takes time. I mean, I don't know if you saw the paperwork, but this whole, that's everything that I, that, a little bit of that is the documentation, the majority of that is additional documentation that I asked for. So it, it takes a while to, to review, um, going back and forth. Uh, so, uh, we've asked them, could you at least get it to us in October or September? And I, and unfortunately, you know, we've just not gotten any progress on it.
Thank you for that. That is helpful to know, might be helpful to us. That is helpful to know, might be helpful to us, not, we might not be any more successful in our conversations with the county. So, thank you.
Absolutely, sure.
And they do base this on their audited report?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And, and I, and I get that from, from working in that. But, there still are preliminary numbers. I mean, I, I understand, being in finance, that, you know, there's a difference between preliminary and, and audited. You've, you've got encumbrances to deal with, you've got final audit entries that you have to deal with. But, at least it would give us a better idea of a, than a shot in the dark. And when their rate is fluctuating, as much as it's fluctuating, it's, it's almost impossible.
I was going to say, especially that huge increase.
Yes.
You know, over a dollar.
Right.
Rate increase is hard to anticipate.
Yes, exactly. You know, and, and it's also hard, you know, again, luckily, we made out okay. I mean, I prefer not to lose money in, in the, in the sewer fund, obviously, but it, it could have been worse. But, again, we made the decision not to increase the rates on our, on our customers. So, that's a tough decision to make. But, by getting the information as late as we're getting from them, it takes us time to, to review it. Even if we wanted to raise the rates for our customers, you're probably only talking about being able to change the rates for the last three or four months of our fiscal year. That's, that's, that's not going to, that's not anything compared to the rate increase that we received. So, timely information is crucial with this, and we just haven't been very successful in, in getting them to provide that to us. So, I think the last account that I had was on page 215, and that's account 1050, which is the depreciation account. So, again, it's an enterprise fund. So, any capital assets, projects, anything capital related is not considered an expense. It's considered an asset on your balance sheet that you depreciate. So, if you buy a $50,000 vehicle, let's say, you will recognize the depreciation expense each year. If the life is 10 years, you're going to recognize $5,000 on that asset till it's fully depreciated. So, this account here that has $75,000 in it, that's all of our capital assets together and the depreciation, no matter what the useful life is, until it's, it's expended. Any questions on any of the other accounts that I mentioned? If not, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, and he's going to finish up the sewer fund.
Thanks, Lisa. Yeah, I would like to present the FY '25 proposed sanitary sewer operating budget from a public works perspective. Michael, next slide, please. So, the proposed FY 2025 sanitary sewer budget is $6,765,330. And the reason for it being so elevated this year compared to past years is that we have budgeted $3 million for those sewer pump station upgrades, which I'll get into a little later. The town sanitary sewer system is made up of approximately 40 miles of sewer mains, 1,041 manholes, 13 pump stations, and collects nearly a million gallons of sewage a day. The system is primarily operated by Wayne Smith and Steve Green, pictured to your right, 365 days a year. The regular cost to operate the system includes Wayne and Steve's salaries, the utilities to run the pump stations, which equal $18,900, equipment maintenance and supplies, $20,000, root control, $35,000, main and lateral repairs, $22,000, and miss utility at $3,050 amongst several other smaller items. On page 213 of your budget book, item 840806, I'm requesting funding to replace the 2014 Ford F-250, the sanitary sewer pickup truck, which is vehicle number three in our fleet. This vehicle serves a critical role in the daily operations of the sanitary sewer system and is primarily dedicated to troubleshooting sewer backups, marking missed utility requests, and inspecting pump stations. We are selling the old vehicle on GovDeals and hope to get at least $4,000 for it, and the cost of the new truck is estimated to cost $65,000. Is there any questions on that? Michael, please. After last week's meeting, where we discussed the overhaul and replacement of two sanitary sewer stations at the large cost of $3 million, I felt that a little more description of what we planned to actually do was needed to provide you, the commissioners, on a, on a huge decision. So, I went to my staff and we, we put our heads together, and one thing we tried to do is give you all a better description, and I'll try to proceed with that now. On page 213 of the proposed budget, it includes the line item 84000800, pump station repairs and replacement, $3,000, $3 million has been earmarked to fund the substantial repairs and replacement to Gateway and Shamrock pump stations. The Shamrock pump station is located approximately 170 feet north of the intersection of East Broadway and North Shamrock. The station collects the sewage from approximately 190 residential properties and pumps it uphill 230 feet to a 15-inch sanitary sewer line on East Broadway. This station consists of a wet well to collect the sewage and a dry well to house the pumps, valves, and other components. Michael? The rehabilitation proposed here includes complete removal of the entire top slab over the wet well and dry well. You can see that to the right, towards the top, the cracks right there. A new concrete top slab with reinforcement will be poured. All new hatches, ventilation fans will be installed. The existing top slab has three large cracks allowing rainwater to leak into the station. The floor of the dry well will be ground down, and the new two-inch floor will be poured. New pads will be installed for the pumps. The sidewalls will be patched or repaired as necessary and then re-coated. All new pumps, piping, check valves, and gate valves will be installed. Everything will be painted, coated, or made of a corrosion-resistant material. This station has a history of clogging pumps. The new pumps are designated to be non-clogging, hopefully eliminating or at least reducing time spent on clogging the pumps. And these clogs are primarily the result of the new wipes that are out there, the flushable wipes and so forth that are supposedly safe to put down your toilets, and they are not safe. They get into our, these pumps and they cause them to clog up. In addition, new conduit wiring, outlets, switches, and lighting will be installed. The existing conduit is rusted through, through with wiring exposed in some locations. A new sump pump, dehumidifier, a heater will be installed. Right below the paragraphs there, you can kind of see a picture. I didn't have much room here, but you can see a conduit that's rusted and broken through and an exposed wire on the roof of, of the station. Michael, next slide, please. So, the existing ship's ladder for entry to the dry well is rusted through at the bottom three threads. Temporary bracing has been installed. You can see that as built up with pressure-treated lumber underneath, basically just to keep it sound enough to go up and down on a regular basis. The rehabilitation includes removal of the existing ship's ladder and replacing with a new ladder made of aluminum for corrosion resistance. The existing force main will be televised as part of the rehabilitation and then relined. All new controls will be installed in an outdoor-rated stainless steel enclosure above grade. New telemetry will be installed for notification of alarms to emergency personnel. The current telemetry is very basic, high-level alarm only. The new telemetry will be much more detailed with a list of various alarms, including dry well flood, pump failure alarms, generator alarms, et cetera. The rehab includes installation of a bypass manhole and bypass valve for pumping around the station in the event of major failure. For example, both pumps break down. The existing station does not have this feature. What this would allow is an existing manhole, which then allows us to put a pump down in and pump around the entire pump station up to another sewer manhole. So, we basically pump around the existing failed pump station, which we do not have that capability at this time. If we had that downage right now, we would need to bring our huge shop vac truck, suck out the, the, the tanks, and move to, drive up to another manhole and unload. A new water line and hydrant will be installed. Currently, there is no water at the station. The existing generator and transfer switch was installed in 2015 and will be reused. In 215, in 2015, I went out and we got a, a big grant from the federal government, and we were able to buy generators for the majority of our pump stations in town. So, that was, that was a good year, and they're still in good shape, and we don't plan to replace them. We plan on continuing to use them. Michael? Is there any questions on the Shamrock pump station? Okay. And I'm, I'm, I'll try to move a little forward. I just felt that it was important for you guys to truly understand the, what is happening at these stations, or what we propose to happen at these stations. The Gateway Drive pumping station is located approximately 80 feet northwest of the intersection of Gateway Drive in Blum Court. The station collects the sewage from nine commercial properties and 147 condo units and pumps it approximately 1,100 feet uphill to a manhole 25 feet southwest of, southeast of Bolton Street, just inside the Harford Mall parking lot. This station houses submersible pumps inside a wet well. The wet well is a steel tank, which is rusting and deteriorating significantly. The station was previously owned and operated by Harford Mall before the town took over in the early 90s. While under the mall's ownership, they had a minor upgrade to the station where new pumps and a control panel were installed. At the time, the existing guide rails, piping, and valves were adapted to accept the new pumps. This was poorly done and does not, doesn't allow for easy removal of the pumps without entering the wet well, which is a dangerous practice. Typically, stations are designed so pumps can be removed for service without the need to enter the wet well. In addition, the existing guide rails and associated brackets are now rusted and deteriorating. The proposed rehabilitation includes installation of entire new wet well with new pumps and guide rails, allowing pumps to be removed without entering the wet well. The guide rails and associated brackets would be stainless steel for corrosion resistance. Michael? A major component to the rehab of this station is replacement of the entire force main. Flow to this station has significantly increased due to the addition of the condo units at the end of Gateway Drive. A pump station servicing many of those units at the end of Gateway Drive pumps into the gravity line on Gateway Drive, which then ends up at the Gateway Pumping Station. At times, one pump is not, not able to keep up with the quick inrush from the other station, and the secondary pump will turn on to assist pumping down the wet well. This rehabilitation calls for the new replacement of the existing three-inch force main with a new four-inch force main. This bigger force main, along with the new pumps, will alleviate this problem. In addition to the force main being undersized, it is also deteriorating and has had several point repairs over the last 10 to 15 years. Basically, point repairs where we work up, well, woke up one morning and we saw sewage running down the street. Where was it coming from? Well, the, the force main had a hole in it, and we had to repair it real quick. As part of the rehab, all new controls will be installed in a stainless steel outdoor-rated cabinet above grade. The existing station has no telemetry, meaning no notification to emergency personnel of high-level alarm. The proposed rehabilitation includes new telemetry with various alarms for high-level pump failures, generator alarms, et cetera. Michael? A new flow meter would be installed to help with tracking pump performance and efficiency. There is no flow meter at the existing station. The rehabilitation includes the installation of a bypass manhole and a bypass valve for pumping around the station in the event of a major failure. I explained this process at, at the Shamrock, so we'll also have that feature at this station, which we feel is a valuable, valuable tool. Installation of water line and hydrant is proposed. There is currently no water at this station. The existing generator and transfer switch was installed in 2015, just like Shamrock, and will be reused. And finally, I just want to thank Wayne Smith, who's the sanitary sewer system operator, with his assistance with these descriptive explanations and pictures of the Shamrock and Gateway Drive rehabilitation projects. Wayne worked pretty hard on providing you with a, a good explanation of what we planned to do and feels very strong about how important these projects are. Michael? Thank you. And that's, that's my presentation for the sanitation budget on our side. Is there any questions?
Where are the alarms going to go? Like, does it go to your phone? Does it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they go to the, go to our phones, and we have a list of people they, they contact of, you know, in a list of priority.
Priority.
And, and there's various lists. Do the generators not work, or is there overflow in the wet well? There's a bunch of different things. Also, there's, uh, lights on the, on the stations themselves that will flash when there's a problem, as well as audio alarm on the station, so people in the neighborhoods can hear that there's a problem and perhaps call in as a safeguard of backup to the, the call-in numbers.
As opposed to seeing sewage running in the street.
Absolutely.
Figuring out what happened.
We want any alarm in the world to let us know that something's wrong, and we want to get to it quickly to prevent something like that from happening.
Because at least the one at, the one at Shamrock, there's a stream very close by.
Yes.
I don't know about Gateway, but I know there's one near the Shamrock pumping station. Okay, thank you.
Yes, and just to kind of give you a little history, pump stations used to be placed by streams and so forth like that, so when they did overflow, it would be washed downstream. So, we've, we've come a long way.
We've changed our philosophy on that one, I think.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Klein? Comments? No?
Thank you, Mike.
Ms. Moody?
Yes, ma'am. Do anyone move on with the, the parking fund?
All right.
Sir, I'm not, are you here for a presentation for the budget?
There you go.
Perfect. All righty. So, if you would like to give your presentation, that would be fantastic. Thank you for coming this evening. Yep, you can come on up to the podium. Absolutely.
You're, right. So, welcome. You just have to state your name and who you're representing. There's no three-minute time limit this evening, so.
I'll try not to make that regretful statement. My name is Warren Hamilton, and I'm with Harford County Education Foundation. I'm one of the board of directors and have been for the last 20 years when it was founded. I think it's time for me to step down, but that's a whole different story. And the reason I'm here tonight is to do two things. Thank you for your $2,500 donation grant last year, and under the heading of never being satisfied, I'm here to ask you to do it again. Really, we, I think, are you all familiar with the Education Foundation, or do I need to talk a little bit about how it works? Do you know what our resource center is, if I say that?
I've heard of it, but I think you should give us an explanation.
Okay.
Because at least, I, I remember you coming last year, but three members of the board are new, so you're here to let them know all about your organization.
Okay, thank you. The resource center is located behind, sort of behind the United States Post Office, down toward the American Design Build, I think it's called. We're in that cluster of what looks like townhouses, but it isn't. So, we work from there, and what we do is we have a, the resource center, and that's chock full of school supplies. So, our teachers can come and shop for free anytime, any day. If they come on a Sunday or something, we'd like them to tell us first, so we're sure we have the place manned. But, they literally can come, and new teachers, I always love to see the new teacher arrive because they cannot believe it. They say, we, so we can help ourselves to those? Yeah, yeah. It's for the benefit of our students. The other thing we do is we do supply to some households that need help, for their students, for the little ones that aren't yet in school. We have some things for them to get their mind working and have somebody read to them, show them pictures. But, basically, that's, that's, that's our function. The resource center is kind of our highlight. But, my favorite part of that over these years is when we go to the But my favorite part of that over these years is when we go to the schools, particularly the little guys, and we'll bring them some books. Boy, oh, boy, you'd have thought it was Gold Boyan. They, they love it. They light up, they get excited. I feel bad for the teacher, because when we walk out, they're still excited, but, um, you know, pretty much, we love to do that. We love reading material, learning materials. We try to support the teachers however we can with what we can. And I, I think we've done a pretty good job with that. If you've not been to the Resource Center, you really should drop in and just see it. It's not fancy. It's a whole lot of shelves with baskets of teacher supplies, classroom supplies, backpacks, you name it, it's in the Resource Center. And it's there for free. Come and get it. So I think a lot of them, you can almost read the skepticism, like, wait a minute, there's nothing free in life. Somewhere, some, well, fortunately, the free has been covered by generous folks like you are. Last year, you gave us twenty-five-hundred dollars. That goes a long, long way for school supplies. So, uh, here I am again with my hat in hand and saying, how about we do that again? And I don't know where you stand with that. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know better protocol for this. But, um, have I said enough? Can I clarify some points?
That, that is the protocol. You give your presentation, and then I'm going to ask the board if anyone has any questions.
I don't have a question, but I definitely am wanting to say how much the community also supports you. Um, the, I'm sure all of you have seen the stuff of us.
Oh, yes.
I know that they're kicking off that right now, reaching out to businesses and, and community to make sure that we don't have, you don't have to go out and buy everything, that we can then stuff a bus and make it happen. And it does make a difference. It does.
Oh, it makes a, more difference than you can imagine. Um, the Sheriff's Department also helps us out with that. They'll stuff a patrol car, so. And usually, if a deputy asks me for something, I'll say, yeah, you betcha, amen. Don't want to be on the bad side. Other questions, clarifications? You have an open invitation to come on over and visit with us. You might even want to volunteer. Not so much, right?
I just wanted to compliment you on your, uh, art display, uh, this past April.
Oh, did you get that? Go ahead.
It, it was a wonderful event at the Armory. Uh, very glad to see that space used in such a way, and the, it was tru, it was really impressive, um, to see the artwork that was showcased from every age group. So appreciate the support that you're showing our art teachers, and, and most importantly, the students that are able to have that creative outlet.
Well, thank you. And they are good, aren't they? It's, the talent frightens me. I'm nowhere near that skill level. Other questions, comments, thoughts?
Any other questions? No? Well, thank you so much for coming and making your presentation, and.
Thank, thank you for your time and consideration.
Absolutely, happy to get it.
And we'll look for the checks in the mail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chismore, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
All right, just checking. All right, in that case.
All righty, so with that, we'll move on to the parking fund, um, which starts on page two nineteen. I'm going to be on page two twenty-one. Uh, so we have three main sources of revenue in the, uh, parking fund: meter collections, parking fines, and lease fees. Um, meter collections are, of course, the town's, uh, meters and our park mobile with a little bit from our parking garage voucher program. Uh, projected revenue at almost a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Pre-COVID, this was bringing in about a hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, parking fines is the next account. Um, this is based on two full-time parking enforcement personnel. It's also based on fiscal year twenty-four. Um, we're projecting revenue at seventy-six thousand. Pre-COVID, this was almost double. And then our lease fees is the last account. This, um, reflected actual lease agreements at the time the budget was put together at the end of March. Um, it's based on, of course, all of our lots at Bon Thomas, Hickory, Lee, um, as well as the parking garage. We have two separate agreements, um, for parking with, uh, Main Street Tower, as well as Vagabond, and our projected revenue is sixty-one thousand. Um, again, pre-COVID, um, this was, um, almost double. So that just gives you an idea of how much we've lost in revenue due to COVID.
Asking about parking fines, uh, and this might go to both you and the chief. Should we understand that decrease to mean that there's been not a decrease in enforcement, but in a decrease of violations?
That's correct.
So, a double-edged sword. I mean, certainly, we like the revenue, but I also appreciate that there's fewer parking violations in town. You know, like, you raise the tax on cigarettes, people smoke less. Well, you get less revenue, but people are smoking less, so it's sort of a, you know. You win some, you lose some.
Uh, uh, you've got less parkers. I mean, you've got less people coming into town, par, parking, um.
And as a result, less of a need to park illegally, because there are more legal spots open to park.
Correct. Um, all right, so other than those three, um, the next two accounts, county share operations and county share capital, are related, other than they're both, um, county share, because the, the county pays sixty-seven and two-thirds, uh, or sixty-seven percent rather of our expenses. We pay thirty-two percent. So one is operating, and one is related to capital. Uh, so from operations, this will include insurance, the maintenance, the operations of the parking garage, as well as the prorata, um, or the transfer number, similar to what we talked about in the sewer fund. In the capital, uh, county share, um, we have an agreement, the town and the county do, that we will deposit fifteen thousand dollars into our capital reserve account solely for the parking garage. So they pay two-thirds of that, we pay a third of that each fiscal year. Um, that balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-three is, um, a little over a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in that capital account. And both, um, both of us have to agree on what we're going to utilize that money for. Since, um, we are responsible for maintaining it, um, anytime there is a capital need, uh, we, of course, reach out to our contact, let them, let them know, um, get their sign off. Whether we're going to use the reserve account or not, we still have to have their sign off, because they're paying for two-thirds of the, of the capital project. And then the last account there, the transfer from retained earnings, um, what this is telling us is that we cannot balance the parking fund budget with current revenues. We're, we're expecting a net loss again of a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So, um, again, not, not good news. Um, this is not something that we want to see year after year after year, but we are, um, it, it is, we are, we are watching it, but without the income stream that we used to have, there, there are no other sources of revenue coming in.
How many years have we run a projected, a loss on the parking garage? I think, I know it was last year was one as well.
Yeah, I, I, I can't say for a hundred percent certain I can get back to you on it, but, uh, I know since COVID.
Since COVID. That makes some kind of sense, but.
At least since COVID. Yeah, yeah. So any questions on revenues? Okay, so move into expenses. On page two twenty-five, so we have expenses, um, kind of segregated into three sections. There's an other expense category, which is page two twenty-five. There's a parking garage, and then there's lots. And the reason we have to do that is, is because, as I mentioned, the, the county is reimbursing us for two-thirds of our expenses. So we have to keep the parking garage expenses segregated from everything else for auditing purposes. They're actually coming in, oh, this week. They're coming in this week to, to audit our fiscal year twenty, twenty-three. Um, so it just makes for auditing purposes a whole lot easier if, if you have those, um, in separate accounts. So on this page, like I mentioned, is our other. So it really doesn't fit into either lots or parking garage. Um, our parking fine charges, uh, we have a third-party processor, if, if you will, who will, um, mail out all of our delinquent notices, um, for these, uh, take, put the flags on the registrations for, for non-payment, take the flags off. Um, we pay them, uh, nineteen percent of the collection fee. So it's not when it's, the tickets are issued, it's when they're collected that they, that they are basically paid. Um, the contract is with Passport, and it was renewed in January of just this year for a three-year period with subsequent renewals. And that budget equates to fourteen thousand four forty. We do have a debt service on our parking enforcement, uh, vehicle. Again, this will work exactly the same way as the sewer fund, because it's an enterprise fund. Um, we have a hundred and seven dollars in interest payments with three thousand eighty-nine dollars in principal payments. Um, the, the interest rate is nice and low, at one-point-oh-eight percent. Um, so, um, this will mature in fiscal year twenty-eight. And then depreciation is here, very similar to what it is in the sewer fund. Um, the bulk of the depreciation is the parking garage. Um, but we house this account in the other department, because it does include vehicles and lots and, and stuff like that. On page two twenty-six, this is our lots and meters, um, kind of division. Uh, we have the transfer to general fund lots. So again, separating these transfers to the general fund between lots and parking garage because of auditing purposes with the county. Um, the budget here is a hundred, almost a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Um, and that, that calculation is on pages two twenty-nine and, and two thirty. And then on page two twenty-seven, this is our parking garage section with the first account, oh, two fifteen, being insurance. Um, this will cover the property liability and garagekeeper's insurance for the garage, as well as the garage sweeper. Um, it does include a preliminary rate increase of seven percent, so the, um, the budget is fifty thousand. That is a significant increase, um, in expense since the, since the current, well, fiscal year twenty-four. Because we, we're, um, Michael's department actually sent all of, all of the updated information on our buildings with regard really to this building, but included everything else that the town owns. Um, the garage was, um, underinsured, so, um, that was a significant increase. Oh, eight, three, five, capital repairs, um, parking garage. This is that fifteen thousand dollars that I mentioned at the beginning in, in revenues, um, where the town and the county split. Oh, nine, oh, two is debt service. This is for that Johnson Control, uh, lighting project, the retrofit project that we talked about in the general fund. There was a debt service. The parking garage benefited from that project as well, so it has a piece of that debt service. Um, with eleven sixty-one being interest, and then principal being almost five thousand dollars. Uh, this won't mature until my fiscal year thirty-two. And then we have a debt service on the parking garage sweeper, um, with interest of two thirty-nine and principal payments of sixty-six seventy, maturing in fiscal year twenty-seven. And then lastly, on page two twenty-eight, is that transfer number to the general fund with regard to the parking garage, uh, budget of ninety-five thousand one eighty-eight. So that calculation, as I mentioned, is on page two twenty-nine and two thirty. Looking at page two thirty, you'll see, uh, again, similar to the sewer fund, with personnel as well as percentages of salary, but just broken out between lots and meters and parking garage. And then on page two twenty-nine, very similar, um, benefits, um, not necessarily dollars, but categories of benefits, as well as overhead as it relates to the general fund and the personnel working within the, the parking fund. Do you all have any other questions on parking fund?
Lisa, I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a way to, um, have a record of lot, lots? Let's say, the one I'm thinking of in particular is across from the library on Pennsylvania Avenue. There's a lot behind some office spaces, um, off of Hickory, that have meters. But I very, very, very seldom see anybody parking there. Am I right about that? Am I, am I just seeing it at the wrong time?
You're right about it. It's, it's very underused.
At the Hickory?
So are we paying for those meters on an annual basis to be there?
We don't.
No, we own those meters, Mary.
We own them, okay.
And, and so all we have to do is maintain them if they go bad.
The Hickory Lot is probably the one that is the least utilized.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's the furthest from everyone, and.
You might have to walk ten extra steps.
You might have to walk a little, a little longer.
It'll kill you. Okay, thank you.
Public school uses it occasionally.
Thanks.
Could you talk a little bit about what you mean when you say transfer from retained earnings?
Sure. So basically, what that means is you, we're required to have a balanced budget. So the only way to have a balanced budget, if you can't, um, can't do it from your current revenues, is to take it from your retained earnings. So think of your balance sheet. You have, uh, uh, assets, so it's going to be your cash, um, anything, capital, vehicle, building. Liabilities are going to be anything, any debt, basically, that you owe. So the difference between your assets and your liabilities are going to be your equity. So retained earnings is synonymous with equity, um, fund balance in the, in the general fund. It's just, it's an enterprise fund, so that's the correct terminology, and the enterprise fund is retained earnings. So when you can't balance your budget, the only avenue that you have is to take from your equity to fund and pay for expenses.
I did not realize those two things were synonymous, so thank you very much.
Sure. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Steve. He's got some expenses to go over with you.
And I promise you, I'm going to be very quick on these things, because there's not much to talk about here. So on pages twenty-six and twenty-seven, parking fund expenses that are in line with what Public Works is responsible for, and just to hit on a few lines pertaining to the proposed FY twenty-five parking fund budget. So lots and meters on page one, two twenty-six, we have included nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to maintain and operate the parking lots in town. And, and these expenses basically cover, um, uh, seal coating, striping, crack sealing, signage, meter maintenance for all the meters, and basically, that's, that's what we do to take care of the parking lots in town, nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any questions on the lots and meters? Before the budget was, uh, not in the red, we were tried to, uh, do paving projects to replace them. And the Hickory Avenue Lot is one that we would really like to do, where the Board of Education is, is, uh, parked, and we have an agreement with them to park there. And it, it is very, it is in rough shape, and we'd like to try to find the funds necessary to repave that one of these days. Any other questions with regard to that? And the parking garage on page two twenty-seven, just real quick. Uh, the parking garage has approximately, uh, one thousand ten spaces, has two elevators that require regular inspection and maintenance. The regular day-to-day operating cost is budgeted at forty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, uh, which is discussed in account item ninety-four hundred oh six oh one. It includes the cost of elevator maintenance contract, all utilities, signs, sweeper brushes when we sweep the, uh, parking garage, light bulbs, and the elevators are cleaned daily during the week, and the garage is swept and vacuumed from top down approximately twenty-six times each year. I only have one real different project, other than the regular maintenance this year, and that is to paint the Pennsylvania Avenue Stairway to prevent further corrosion. The, the stairwell is starting to corrode again, and rust is starting to show up, and I'd like to cover it with paint. And then hopefully, we have a future project that we're working on to enclose that same, um, stairwell, and hopefully, getting it freshly painted and then enclosing it, it will, uh, last a lot longer without future maintenance costs. And again, as Lisa's mentioned, uh, the county reimburses the town for sixty-seven-point-two percent of all costs to operate the garage. And that's basically all I have with regard to the parking garage.
So do we have, I think we have a presenter here.
Derek?
The Boys and Girls Club.
Come on up to the podium here. Um, so his letter, um, is on page one ninety-three, everyone.
How's it going, everybody?
The floor is yours, sir.
All right. Well, thank you for, uh, having me out again, uh, to give you guys an update on our clubs, uh, in particular, our, our club here in Bel Air at McFall Center, uh, as well as our club, uh, what we consider a community impact program at the Homes at Fountain Green. Uh, we, uh, have chartered the Homes at Fountain Green location, uh, so that is officially now a Boys and Girls Club chartered location with, uh, Boys and Girls Clubs of America. We're seeing between fifteen and twenty-five kids a day there. A very specific, very specific population that, uh, can't really, uh, figure out transportation to our traditional Boys and Girls Club, either to or from. Um, that's what we're seeing, uh, with what was our Club on the Go model, which, uh, continues to, uh, is a pun, continues to roll, uh, around, uh, throughout Hartford, Cecil and, uh, the surrounding counties. Um, but we were able to transition that model from a, uh, temporary model where we were driving in and providing services on a daily basis to one where we're arriving, uh, and setting up in a communal space that's there, uh, using technology and all the cool things that, uh, you would find in a traditional Boys and Girls Club with the exception of a gym. Um, so, uh, the kids in that neighborhood have embraced us and they're, we are raising the quality of life for the kids that, uh, that are in that neighborhood. On top of that, uh, our Bel Air location, uh, continues to thrive. It is one of our higher attended Boys and Girls Clubs in the county, uh, and, uh, we are seeing seventy-five to eighty-five kids a day there right now. Uh, summer months will, uh, will increase. We will see between a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirty kids a day there. Uh, they'll experience the full day of summer camp throughout the eight weeks. It's a seven-thirty AM to six PM, uh, camp, uh, for those eight weeks. So that means a lot of happy kids and happy parents and exhausted staff. Uh, but, uh, it's an excellent program. We continue to enhance, uh, the program offerings that we have through what, uh, Boys and Girls Clubs develop as evidence-based programs, including our Summer Brain Game, which is, uh, designed and evidence-based in its, uh, its effect to, uh, reduce summer learning loss, which is a critical component to bridging the gap, uh, of poverty. Uh, the other component is, uh, our growth outside of Hartford, uh, outside of Bel Air, outside of Cecil County, uh, into Kent, uh, with a, uh, a model that is very similar to what we have in McFall. Uh, it's a Parks and Rec building, uh, that we are, um, utilizing, uh, much in the same way with an MOU, uh, with their county government, uh, to serve kids that are, uh, that, that feed into that program. We're going to start, uh, a program with Kent County Public Schools to actually bus kids to that location starting next school year. Uh, and then in Queen Anne's County, uh, we have been asked to take on the wonderful, uh, opportunity of, uh, writing and, uh, taking the lead on their Twenty-First Century, uh, program. Uh, they had previously been running that Twenty-First Century program. If you're familiar, it's a Twenty-First Century Community Schools Learning, uh, Program, uh, that is a federally funded program that's, that's passed through to states. Uh, they've been doing that for about eighteen years and they just don't have the capacity for it anymore. Uh, so happily, uh, we found the opportunity to self-fund our program in Queen Anne's and will be serving kids at three Title One, uh, community schools in Queen Anne's County, uh, officially starting next school year. We're doing it now, but we're just not telling anybody. Um, so, uh, our expansion of services continue to, uh, to bear fruit. Our school-based programs are also creating revenue, uh, through the Maryland Childcare Scholarship, uh, which allows parents that are eligible, and we target schools with high eligibility, uh, to go after the Maryland Childcare Scholarship, which means that it costs basically zero dollars, uh, for those families to have their children in high-quality Boys and Girls Club before and after-school programs in schools where, um, really traditional transportation to a Boys and Girls Club doesn't exist. Uh, and then finally, we're working with Hartford County Public Schools, uh, to enhance what we're doing right now with transportation. We've got about fifteen schools throughout Hartford County that are transporting kids to our various Boys and Girls Clubs in Hartford County on a daily basis. Uh, however, because we haven't cracked the code until now on how to fill as many seats with kids as possible, the cost can be prohibitive at twenty-two dollars a week. Um, so working with the school system and with, uh, the dollars that we're receiving from the Consortium on Community Support Services, there's a longer name, but just, that's as much as I can remember right now, uh, we are enhancing what we're able to do with youth mental health programs. Uh, there's a program called, uh, Positive Action, which is typically, uh, done through school systems, through their curriculum. We have adapted it, uh, and have contracted with a third party to adapt it specifically for out-of-school time and specifically for Boys and Girls Clubs. So we're very excited to be able to offer that enhancement to what has been, uh, otherwise, uh, an excellent, uh, youth development program. Uh, so along with that, uh, meeting with Hartford County Public Schools, they are going to help with promotion of our transportation programs so that we can reduce that cost per family down as low as we possibly can, so there's no barrier for any families that, uh, want to be able to afford Boys and Girls Club, uh, membership and take advantage of all the really tremendous and wonderful, incredible things that our, our, uh, youth development people do on a daily basis. And that's, that's my update.
Well, thank you very much. Does any member of the board have any questions? What do you do with your spare time?
Uh, I have a five-year-old. And that's pretty much it.
Well, you're doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you, Mary.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all so much for having me here.
All right, one more fund to go.
All right.
Special Revenue Fund, um, page two thirty-four. So the Special Revenue Fund, um, it's different than, it is considered a governmental fund like the General Fund, um, but it is different in that it, um, kind of houses, uh, grants or sep, special projects that don't lend themselves to the normal fiscal year budgeting. Um, you know how in the, in the General Fund, um, any excess of revenues over expenditures, um, without going into any reserves would be closed to your unassigned fund balance? You can't keep anything, right? Un, unless you have legislation that allows you to reserve those funds, it has to go into the unassigned fund balance. Whereas this Special Revenue Fund, um, the reason accounts go in here is it's a revolving account. So whatever your revenue is, let's say you have a grant for fifty thousand, you're gonna show that, uh, fifty thousand dollar revenue for the grant, you're also gonna show it as a fifty thousand dollar ex, expense. If you expend the money, which typically is what happens, you're gonna expend the money first before you get, uh, grant revenues, grant money reimbursement back. And that grant expands m, uh, more than one fiscal year, you're not losing it to any type of cumulative or total fund balance. It stays within that category. So if it's CDBG to CDBG, you have a CDBG reserve account. So we really have a reserve account for every single one of these accounts that are listed here, and it just revolves from year to year. So I'm only gonna mention a, a couple, um, but if you have a questions on some other ones, I'd be happy to. Um, the first one is account oh, seven, 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 which is the seized property for Federal Department of Justice. Um, this is related, as you, as you might imagine, to the Police Department. Uh, we actually have three forfeiture sharing cases with the DEA that have been pending, um, for quite a while. Um, but we're hoping to receive those monies in fiscal year twenty-five, finally. Um, they must be spent on law enforcement items that meet the DOJ and federal equitable sharing program guidelines. Um, the projected revenue here is thirty thousand three ninety-two. Then we have oh, seven, eight, five, which is a grant. This is a community parks and playground grant. Um, this was a fiscal year twenty-five grant application and we requested a hundred and ten thousand one hundred. And I believe we, yes, we were recently notified that we were awarded this grant, so very good news. Sorry, go ahead.
I do not have that figure in front of me. We were not funded fully for that, but we did receive, uh, the majority of it. I believe it was a hundred thousand one hundred dollars that we received, so it's awfully close. And congratulations to our, uh, our grant writer who has been waiting since the submission last August to find out that she received that.
So with that, there, there was a match that was required here and it, it, that match is in the General Fund already. That's a fifty thousand dollar match. Um, so this project will fund improvements at Plum Tree Park, um, and will also include the installation of four, um, AED units at four different parks. Uh, account two thousand and one, the CDBG account or Community Development Block Grant account, uh, revenue in this account is provided through the CDBG program, which is part of the federal HUD allocation, and it's a pass-through, uh, from Hartford County. Uh, we do have remaining, a very small amount of remaining FY twenty-two funds, um, as well as twenty-three and twenty-four, and all of those funds are expected to be used to replace the armory windows upon completion of the, of a grant agreement. We have a grant agreement each fiscal year with regard to CDBG. Uh, account two thirty-five, the Explorer Scouts, um, this is really all, um, grant-driven, um, twenty-two thousand seven twenty-five in the last probably three or four fiscal years. We've been awarded a grant through the Governor's Office of Crime Control. Um, we submitted it again just last week or a couple of weeks ago, um, so we don't know if we'll receive it yet, but we have in, like I said, the last three or four, so, um, hopefully we'll receive that grant as well. The Cultural Arts Projects, which is account three thousand fifty-two, uh, the majority of this is grant-driven as well. It's a, uh, of that sixteen thousand five sixty, fifteen thousand, um, is a grant for operating, um, expenses through the Maryland State Arts Council, um, for the Arts and Entertainment District, and Economic Development, um, manages that, that grant. Um, other than that, some of the other revenue in there is from our Authors and Artists Holiday Gift Sale, um, which brings in about fifteen hundred dollars. There are other accounts, as you can see, within this fund, um, but at very low, low dollars, so nothing really significant, um, other than those several accounts that I mentioned unless you all have any other further questions. All righty.
No further questions.
Hey, I got that lot's going on there.
Hand down.
I'm sorry. So handed out, uh, four pages to everyone. One is the list of outstanding items. One is the proposed budget nonprofit contributions, and then, um, two are ARPA-related. They are not the same. One should have includes all projects at the top, and the second one should show recommendation at the top.
Director Moody, do you have more of the proposed budget nonprofit contribution sheets?
Yes. Do you need one more? I have one more.
Okay, we good? All right, I think we're good.
Good?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I think I took a second one and didn't need it. All right, so everyone should have four pages.
I have three.
I also have three.
What you missing?
I think we're missing page two of the, I have the one that says recommendations on this big spreadsheet, and I have this and this.
Okay.
So was there a second page it looked like?
Yep.
Okay.
I can make another, I made twelve copies of everything, so...
That, yes, yes.
He's got, he's got copies, front and back.
Oh, front and back, okay.
Yes.
Then we do have, okay, great. We are good.
Yes. Yeah, so four, four sheets, some of them are front and back.
Okay.
Well, I only have three pieces of paper, that's the thing.
Oh, no, you should have four pieces of paper.
Okay.
I didn't make dates. That's probably the problem.
We are looking for, look at that stat, it shouldn't say includes all projects. This one says recommendation, and that's the one. There should be a, another one.
These are projects?
That's the one we're missing. Do we have any more? I think we're gonna have to have Mr. Krantz go make a couple of copies. Thank you. Yep. Okay, here we go. Includes all projects. There. We have two more. We didn't, but we'll have it after. That's what happened.
Steve, I did email all of these to you.
Yes, I got them from you.
Okay. Sorry about that, everyone. I thought I made plenty of copies with some despair.
You did, you did.
So do you wanna go through the outstanding item list?
I wanted to ask, and maybe we can do it this later. I did notice, uh, I, I just had a question about the Hartford County Education Foundation line item, um, if we wanted to address that later or address it now?
Whenever you want.
Okay. Well, I brought it up, so why not?
It's fine. It's okay, absolutely.
Um, I was just curious about the, uh, administration recommendation.
We, we, yeah. Lisa and I had a long discussion about this back and forth, and there's a number of reasons, but in looking at the Alliance, the Army Alliance, um, needed twenty-five hundred dollars and looking at the Education Foundation, some of the discussions centered around, this is gonna sound harsh, I don't mean it to sound this way, is that there's a lot of organizations supporting the Hartford County Education Foundation. Some of that we thought might, might have been better suited for the school board to underwrite, and we opted to prioritize moving money to the Alliance to build up our relationship with the Alliance. It wasn't an easy decision to make because I do, I do not wanna minimize or diminish the, the efforts of the Education Foundation. It was more of which one do I prioritize and understanding that we wanted to kind of continue to build our relationship with the Alliance shifted the money that way. Deputy, correct, Lisa?
Yes, I, I would totally agree, and, and this was the same conversation that we had last fiscal year, too, amongst the, amongst the commissioners.
I was, I was gonna say, I recall a conversation that also included the fact that this is a county-wide organization, and we generally are trying to, um, provide our grants to entities that are particularly serving the town and town residents, and it is town tax dollars that we're using.
I understand that, um, and I agree with the, uh, instinct to favor the Army Alliance. Uh, I wonder if, and I think we can get to this part later, if there wouldn't be somewhere to find... I wonder if, and I think we can get to this part later, if there wouldn't be somewhere to find, say, a thousand dollars for the Education Foundation, just because I think I would prefer that we not, you know, I, I went back before I, before I said anything, I went back and I looked at the, the history of our contribution there. And it does appear for the last couple of years, twenty-twenty-two notwithstanding, that there's been a contribution. And I, I'd prefer to not see that go away entirely. But I also am sympathetic to the, to the point made that they are a much broader footprint. And probably have a much broader support base than some of the other organizations that we contribute to.
They definitely have a broader base. If you look at the, close to the back of the, your booklet that you received, where they're showing pictures of the stuff of us, you'll see quite a, quite a listing of support. So I don't want to sound like, we don't want to support you, but, but on the other hand, they do have a lot of support and there are a number of different events that they put together in order to raise their funds and supplies. Just my input.
I've just added that as number fifteen on the outstanding list, so no worries. No worries. Alright. Madam Chair, do you want to start with the outstanding item and just work down the list?
That, that is fine with me, everybody.
As a, as a start. Okay. Alright, let's do that then. So one in, one, there's no discussion on there. I mean, it's, it's done. We accomplished that for what, what you all wanted. Two, that question had been answered, unless there's any for, okay. Three, Kevin has information on, on that.
Yeah, I contacted the county. They gave me a price that they have for how they maintain the rubberized surface, poured rubber surface for their playgrounds. And that's four dollars, twenty-eight cents, and that would be per square foot. And they would put, they would apply that every two or three years on their playgrounds. I think it's likely that we would probably go every three years. Our use does not equal what their use is for, as far as Stacy and Lynn Getz and the Annie's Playground. Then also looked up what engineered wood fiber would cost. Because that engineered wood fiber would have to be allocate, or well, applied every year. Because if you've seen the playgrounds, the mulch, you know, reduces over the period of time. One thing to remember also is we used to, I don't know how many years ago, we used to just use mulch from Scarborough, which was full of weed seed, full of impurities, and also didn't last. In fact, it didn't, huh?
It was free.
And it was free. But it, it's, it, it has problems with regard to also to even accessibility for a handicap. So engineered wood fiber does not deteriorate as fast. It's, remains, it keeps its level at least better than normal mulch. That ended up to be four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars per one hundred cubic yards. Now, when you drill that down and you start to apply that, and you assume that you're using six inches of additional engineered wood fiber every year, that equals to be a dollar sixty per square foot. So that if you take the sealant and say you're going to apply that every three years, that is a dollar forty-three per square foot, per year. Now, you wouldn't be applying that every year. You'd be applying it every three years, but I'm, I'm trying to compare apples to apples here. One of the other things that, just to keep in mind, is the, obviously the poured rubberized surface would not need any weeding. Would not need to have any chemicals applied to it to prevent the weeds from growing up. And the, any of the issues that are, that are, that the county is seeing, the town probably would not see them as, as bad as the county because the Stacy Lynn Getz, Annie's Playground are used much more intensely than our, our busiest playground, which would likely be the Shamrock Playground. So just to keep that in mind as you review, it's, it's about the same as far as the cost goes. Maybe a little bit better when it comes to the, to the sealant, but not much.
So how much, how many square feet is?
Mr. Small, this is fifty, two more. So what would the cost say be per year then for, say Plum Tree or Homestead?
Plum Tree is in the neighborhood, there's actually two playgrounds there. One is around seventy-five hundred square feet, the other one's four thousand square feet. So for the engineered wood fiber, you're looking at around eighteen thousand per year?
So it'd be eight, that'd be eighteen thousand per year, okay?
Per year. And then, and then the, if, if it's a sealant applied, it would be, again, I'm saying fifteen thousand. It's not gonna be applied every year, but I'm trying to, again, compare apples to apples here as far as what the yearly cost would be.
Right. And then there's all, then there's the initial cost of Plum Tree, which would be, I think that was on the oil of about three hundred thousand, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions about the playground call? Thank you.
Number four is, I know if you all want to discuss that now or save it to, trying to balance it at the very end. You can look at what I handed out to you, which is actually number eight on the list. We can talk about, we can talk about that.
I think those two sort of go together pretty well.
Yeah, so we can do that. So let me, let me walk you through the spreadsheet then. So the nonprofits on the left, and then I thought it would be helpful, helpful to give you a starting point. So I included the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Then you have the fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-five budget request. So this is the request from the organization. The percentage change between twenty-five and twenty-four. And then the twenty-five budget administrator request recommended. And the percentage change, all going back to the twenty-four budget. There were a couple of organizations that I felt needed some additional notes, just so you all had, I guess, more information. So with regard to the Alliance, I, I think I mentioned the last time we met that I provide an analysis to them on a calendar year basis, mainly for their tax purposes, as to our in-kind contributions. So the last one that I completed for them was calendar year twenty-two. The, the town as a whole, so this is not just, let's say, there are events that we aren't reimbursed for, but this is also staffed, a lot of staff time. It equates to forty-five thousand dollars. So we are providing forty-five thousand in in-kind contributions to them. Besides the dollars that we actually provide to them in marketing as well as Christmas break. The Historical Society, we mentioned that the budget increased from five to six in twenty-five was the ceiling or the maximum amount that the town would reimburse them for their snow removal expense. Any other questions on that? You guys have never talked about that. And then with regard to the Volunteer Fire Company, I just wanted to clarify something from Mr. Wynn's comments when he made a presentation. I had a very lengthy phone call with him after we received his letter. Because it's a letter like we've never received in the past. The, the letters that we've received in the past, similar to all of the nonprofits, give us a number that they would like us to contribute. His letter did not have that number in there. If you've seen the, the letter, there is no number in there. Just simply that they were hoping to be able to see an additional three hundred thousand dollars from, from us. Maybe not necessarily in, in hard dollars, direct dollars, but additional assistance on these different issues within the next five years. So in my conversation to him, I'm like, well, how's that gonna work? We need, I, I need to be able to understand so that, you know, Eddie and I can have a, of a conversation about it in order to determine what's put in the budget. So he still would not provide me with a, a number. So I was a little surprised when he presented that, when he was here presenting to you his budget. Because in, in all honesty, he did not provide me with a hard number that he would like to see the contribution be from the town in fiscal year twenty-five. So when Eddie and I were working up his budget, again, we were trying to look at keeping, you know, percentage in line. We thought, okay, five thousand was a considerable number. So again, just wanted to provide those notes to you all, but hopefully this is what you were looking for and this is a help. Let me know what questions that you have.
It is what I was looking for, and I think it's very helpful to have it all on one page with, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, what they asked for and what's recommended. So thank you for doing that.
Of course. So what kind of discussion do you all want to have about the nonprofits? Do you just want to go, do you want to go down the list and just confirm that you're comfortable with the budget as the town administrator has presented to you? Or if you want to change it? Or do you just want to talk about, I think, the three, the Alliance, the Fire Company, and the Hartford County Education Foundation funding?
Director Moody, I would just be interested to know, if we funded any additional money, what part of the budget would you be adjusting to make that happen? What would be your recommendation?
So we've got some monies from the MML dues of about forty-three hundred, so we can utilize that. We do have some additional monies from the real property taxes. So I've, I've got some other recommendation in number eleven on how to utilize the majority of that. But we could, you know, utilize that as well. So it depends on what kind of dollars you all are talking about, which ones are all of them or not of them that you want to change.
I mean, I would, I would put to the group, and I won't press the issue, but I, I would like to hear from my fellow commissioners, their thoughts on, again, one, say a thousand dollars for the Education Foundation.
My, my thought, Commissioner Taylor, would be, look, if we've got three, three, three things on the wish list, thirty-five hundred on the Alliance, five thousand on the Fire Companies, those are my requests, a thousand dollars on the education, you know, presentation there for Hartford County Education Fund. I think one way to approach it, excuse me, allergies are killing me. The, if we've got, you know, forty-two, round that to forty-three hundred, I know rounding stuff for the numbers.
It's all good. It's all good.
But, but if you had forty-three hundred available right there, you know, looked like there was maybe a couple thousand dollars of savings on the IT personnel area as well. So let's just say for talking purposes, if we have six thousand dollars available, then we just take a ratio of some sort and just reach a compromise. In order to, because I, I wouldn't have any problem, you know, reducing, you know, my position on the thirty-five hundred on the Alliance because of the, I appreciate the note and the education there on the in-kind contribution. And I, I definitely have some working room there to, 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 you know, come up with that other thousand dollars off of, off of my requests. So we could just reach some kind of pragmatic compromise.
These are those tough choices because there, there's no organization on here that is not deserving of the money. But I do think the Bel Air Alliance gets the lion's share of the, the money that we distribute to entities, if you count our in-kind contributions, which are certainly very valuable. I, I personally would not fund the Hartford County Education Foundation or the Army Alliance because they're not, to me, tied closely enough to the town and its residents to spend the money there. The Fire Company is only getting like a three point two-two percent, you know, it's, it's definitely in the lowest percentages of increase. So if I was gonna put any money anywhere, I would be very comfortable sending it their way. I think they have a lot of challenges right now. All of them sort of foisted upon them by changes that are beyond their control. The change in the ambulance, the EMS. It, it's been difficult for them. It's made a big change in how they can fundraise. And they certainly need to look for other ways to reach that three hundred thousand dollar increase in five years because I, I'm sure the town is not going to be able to come up with it. And the other, the thing that I do want to be sure we don't lose sight of is Winter Wonderland, which doesn't appear in our budget. And as long as we're going to do in-kind contributions as we have in the past, then they are taken care of. Because they are also all volunteer, all con, they have no money making events like the Barbecue Bash or the Wine Festival, you know, some of our other, our other groups have. So that's kind of what my thinking is. I, I, they're, they're all good works organizations, but we only have so many dollars to, to use.
Can I ask what the support base for the Boys and Girls Club is? Because I know that they'd mentioned they're actually a multi-county organization. So they seem to have an even broader reach than the Hartford County Education Foundation does. And I, you know, again, I, I'm not knocking this, like, they're all good works organizations, but we're actually providing them an increase.
But they run an actual Boys and Girls Club at the McFaul Center in town.
I, I understand that. But, you know, the, for instance, the Hartford County Education Foundation brought their art event to the Armory. Not to say that that center isn't more impact daily, but.
I'm not, my feet are not set in stone on not giving them a thousand dollars. It's just how to split up what extra money we, we have, which isn't a lot.
Yeah, we, we have a few extra dollars, like I said, there that, and, and I mean, I could support a thousand dollars for the Hartford County Education Foundation. You know, their center is centered right here in Bel Air for the Resource Center. I, I am in favor of the money for the Army Alliance. And we have a tremendous, and, and the, the fact that stuck out to me was just how many people are residing in the town of Bel Air in the two-one-oh-one-four, you know, that are, are there. So there's a strong root there. I certainly have a admitted bias towards the, you know, supporting our base. I'll just admit that upfront. And so I, I, I would like to see that, that stay in. I would be much more willing to reduce my request at the thirty-five hundred on the Alliance to find compromise funds for Commissioner Taylor's request. And I would like to find a way to, that, that we can give the Fire Company another five thousand dollars. I, I totally get the fact that they came to us with a very vague and unspecific request. But I, I still feel like I'd like to do that if we can. That's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. We're trying to see where we,
I think Ms. Moody wants to jump in here.
Some input, yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to comment. So if, if you all, I, I know percentages, you know, we were talking about them the other day, hence wanting to put something like this together. So increasing the Fire Company's contribution by five thousand to one-seventy-four, eight-eight-nine would be about a six point three percent increase. So, you know, a little bit more in, in line with the others, if you, if you will. So I know we were talking about six, so that would be, that would be five thousand of the six. And if you all were gonna do the Hartford County Education Foundation of a thousand, there's your six there. So it just depends on. Just depends on if there's anything that you all want to do additionally for the Alliance.
Yeah, I'd like to he, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I, I would like to know what the other commissioners are thinking about the Alliance, 'cause with this new, looking at the data, the way that you've presented it, you know, I'm seriously, you know, backing off of that, you know, I'm, I'm being persuaded to, you know, pull back on that, but I'm wondering how the other commissioners feel about whether, um, the Alliance is adequate, you, you feel comfortable with the, the numbers that we've got there for them, or is anybody else, uh, in favor of some increase over the administration's recommendation on the Alliance, the, the Bel Air?
Yeah, this is Steve Cullen. Um, yeah, I, I think I'm okay with the Alliance as it is since it has a ten percent increase for the year, uh, you know, looking at these increases. And I support, you know, the extra five Ks or so for the Bel, for the Volunteer Fire Company and, and also with Jake at the, I, I support his, his initiative for the Education Foundation, 'cause you know, Bel Air Elementary School has a lot of students on assistance with lunch and breakfast programs and the like, and you remember that school services a lot of the Sarc community in the area, so, um, I, I, I support that for the, a thousand dollars for that. That's, that's my two cents on those, those alliances.
So Steve, may, this is Jim, um, what were you saying about the Alliance? You're, you're okay with the way they are and not, just going with the administrator's, um, you know, recommendation on that?
Yes, for the Bel Air line.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Right, 'cause like I said, that's a ten percent increase from what we were shown in previous years, so I, I mean, that's, you know.
Okay.
That's, that's a nice plus, plus the in-kind services we provide, I think that's, that's a good thing for them.
All right. So Ms. Moody, if I could just summarize, if we give no additional monies to the Bel Air Alliance and give a thousand dollars to the Hartford County Education Foundation and an additional five thousand to the Bel Air Volunteer Fire Company, that we are all balanced and good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely can, Jer, I can support that.
Okay.
We're keeping the Armory Alliance at twenty-five hundred? Okay, perfect.
Everybody sort of feel okay about that?
Yeah, it's just painful.
It is painful.
These decisions because all of them have their niche and many of them do really phenomenal work with individuals and when I am out and about in the town, anytime, any day, there's fire trucks and ambulances going somewhere and police being called upon as well. So it's, it's, this is not easy for sure, but I, I can go along with what was just proposed.
Okay, so I think we have a consensus?
I got it, yes, ma'am. All right, so that takes care of four and fifteen, that was added, and we did eight. All right, um, so number five, um...
Director, could I just, I just wanted to also make sure that we got clarification on, what, what's the sense of the commission, I'd like to know, on, um, supporting the, um, Army Alliance, as you had mentioned that, that, that wasn't...
That was, that was staying in.
Yeah, staying at twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, staying at twenty-five hundred.
I'm just keeping my alliances straight.
No worries. And I'm gonna, don't worry, I'm gonna summarize all this at the end, so.
Okay.
Um, we, we'll, we'll know that we're all on the same page.
Make your roll on the same page.
You got it.
Thank you very much.
Which would be your spreadsheet.
Yes, ma'am.
That's where it is, all right.
Um, all right, so we're at number five. Is everyone okay with the three point five percent cost of living?
I am.
I am.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't know that this is necessarily a dollars issue, um, but we did talk about, um, number six here on the annual mailing of the newsletter. Uh, personally, it sounded like from the conversation that we just need to have more conversation on it and it's just too soon to put something into the budget, if anything at all, so i- if, if, um, if that's fair or if anybody else has any comments on it, that was my understanding.
My understanding is we're gonna have further discussions and it won't be in the budget this year as a dollar figure.
Okay, all right, very good. Uh, number seven, the analytics, I believe, um, Michael sent that out to everyone, or Dave, sorry, sent that out to everyone, did anyone have any additional comments on that? Okay.
I, I think that was to help support number six, that's all, right?
I'm sorry, Steve, did you want that, number six, to be in the budget this year?
No, no, I, I think number seven was to help support our discussion on number six.
Yes, yes, you are correct, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're down to nine and ten, which we utilized those, those savings, um, to fund the different, those two different organizations, so we're good with nine and ten. Um, number eleven, I had mentioned half of this the, the last time we met, um, but we have, um, forty-five thousand dollars in real property taxes, um, that was a balance the budget dollar amount. I'd like to propose that we utilize the majority of, of that twenty-five thousand to fund the Wayfinding signage project instead of using capital reserve, as well as fifteen thousand for the dimmable lights project at the Armory Auditorium. So we would just reduce the capital reserve, um, by forty thousand dollars as well as the real property taxes, if that's okay with everyone. Okay?
Sure.
All right.
Just, just so I follow the numbers, do, do, um, tentative budget has these funded out of capital reserves?
Correct.
At a bigger number, is, is it a bigger, it's, it's a bigger total number?
So capital reserve right now is at a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so this would reduce it to a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
On what we're moving at, right, okay, gotcha, thank you.
Yep, you got it. Um, twelve, uh, Chief just whispered in my ear that, that, um, he may be able to find a grant for this, so we're not gonna fund this, okay?
Local, local government insurance trust, I think we might be able to get up to five thousand for that.
Okay.
Yep, just found that out.
All right, good deal. Um, at the last meeting, I was asked, um, to provide, uh, in one place, a summary of the capital projects that are being funded with the capital reserve, so that's what I did here. Um, I kept in B and F, um, which we just talked about under number eleven, so we're gonna strike both of those projects, which would leave the rest of them to be funded from capital reserve.
Lisa, this is Steve, F, is that a typo, should that be fifteen thousand, not twenty-five?
Which one?
On F, of thirteen F?
No, that should be twenty-five. Wayfinding is twenty-five and the dimmable lights are fifteen.
Oh, never mind, yeah, my bad.
No worries.
And then, did we have a top line change for the capital reserve before and after?
Top line?
Like, the capital reserve before this transfer and the capital reserve after this transfer?
Uh...
'Cause I know that you had said that was impacted by the audit at the last meeting.
So, um, yes, but you have to also take into consideration fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay.
And, um, what's in the budget for fiscal year twenty-four is, uh, four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, yep, four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand coming from the, from the capital reserve. That may not all come from the capital reserve. Um, I'm working on the budget amendment right now for FY twenty-four, um, so whatever monies we can pay for projects through current revenues and not capital reserve, we're gonna do.
But needless to say, the capital reserve is very healthy.
Yes.
And that this is...
Absolutely.
A mere dent.
Yes, a mere dent is a good way to put it. All righty, um, so that takes care of that and that, all right, that leaves us with ARPA. Does, before we get into ARPA, does anybody have any other budget questions, funding, moving money around?
The only thing I wanna be sure of is that Winter Wonderland, whatever we are doing here, is going to be fine. Mr. Hopkins?
If you say it will be fine, it will be fine.
We don't need to address any funding in the budget if we continue to do the, um, in-kind as we have in the past, is that be correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, but I, what I like to do with Ms. Parker and the Chief and, and Mr. Klein is to work as cooperatively with him as I can to find other alternatives to offset our costs, if I can. I think we can make it happen, it's just trying to find the right, there's resources out there, it's finding the right resources to make it happen.
Just wanted to make sure that we weren't losing an opportunity if we needed to, you know, go through the budget and find a few thousand dollars for them at this point, uh, because.
Right.
It, it is such a terrific event for our downtown businesses and for all the folks that come to town, as well as people that live here, I wanna make sure that they are not, uh, eight thousand dollars short.
I would be less than honest if I didn't say finding a couple thousand in the budget would be great, but, but I have no problem with working with Steve and the Chief to figure out a workaround.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, anybody?
I, I was just gonna, on, on the Winter Wonderland thing, I, my recollection of all these meetings or my impression about it is the fact that, I, I mean, I'm, I'm with you, you know, I, I'm with your sentiment, I'm with, I'm with everything you're saying. Um, and I think that the idea of the MOUs and stuff is to see, you know, we've got a lot of pressure, you know, on the police resources.
Well, I, I definitely think there should be MOU.
And, and, and so even though it's not like a budget issue on, on being able to plug a number in there, I think that that's hopefully where, you know, I'm sure, you know, the conversations are gonna be focused on because, um, we've gotta find that balance.
For sure. And I, and I think MOU is an excellent idea for all our organizations so that everybody knows what the rules are and, and what they can expect from both sides.
Agreed.
Just to, uh, finish my survey, um, how did the two of you feel about Winter Wonderland and continuing to support them?
Oh, I, I think Winter Wonderland is phenomenal in what they've, they do every year and they depend on volunteers to help with lights and all, but the police end up having a huge role to play and DPW has a huge role to play, and I think that is our contribution.
Oh, I agree.
It would be lovely if we had a few thousand dollars excess.
Oh, I am not at all looking for a few thousand dollars to give them, as long as we're gonna continue our in-kind support so they can continue to operate.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I have full faith and confidence in town leaders to continue to support Winter Wonderland as, as we have and to come to an amicable agreement that hopefully makes the process less burdensome for all, and I, I have full faith in our...
All right.
In the Chief and Director Klein and Administrator Hopkins.
I'm sure they'll find a, a resolution, so. We'll leave that to you to work on, but we won't be addressing it in the budget, so now we're on to ARPA.
All righty. Okay, so everyone should have two spreadsheets. One is entitled Includes All Projects at the Top. Um, so this basically took the one, the original one that I handed out to you, not the, the one that's in the budget book, the one I handed out to you, um, that was dated sometime in April. Um, and I, like I said, I updated the numbers from the, um, ARPA reporting that was required at the end of, um, April. So I did not, I, I wanted you all to have just an updated spreadsheet. Um, really not gonna focus on it, but it's there as a reference if we need it. Um, I really wanna look at the one that's titled Recommendation. So what I've done is I have, um, crossed off, uh, struck-through projects, um, that I'm recommending us not utilize ARPA money. Um, some of them I'm gonna recommend using capital reserve, some of them there's no recommendation because there needs to be more discussion. Um, and then if you wanna turn to the last page, um, it is balanced, if you will, um, we still have an a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar excess over ARPA, but I do believe that we will continue to earn, well, I know we'll continue to earn interest on the unused, uh, funds, and I think we'll get pretty close to that number. Um, I can't tell you...
So when you say excess over ARPA, that's how much, we've spent more than the ARPA money that we have, but you think it'll be covered by the interest?
I do, I do, I think it'll be pretty close.
And that's with these estimates, you know, with, with enough confidence that they will not run over budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Um, and, and that is, I mean, I know, um, Steve, Steve's numbers, I think, are, are fairly solid with regard to the sewer projects, I mean, as best as we can do, they're, they're up to date, I mean, I think that's a fair statement, right, Steve?
Yep, especially for air, that's your...
Yes, um, with regard to Thomas and George Street, Kevin, I mean, pretty well up to date on an estimate for...
We'll do the, put out the bid here in another week or so.
Right.
Director Small?
As far as the estimate goes, it's still the two thousand seventeen estimate.
I was gonna say, I do recall you saying that this cost could potentially balloon.
Right, you have three phases, it's doubtful that we could have to do the, the George Street.
I'm not proposing we do all three.
Right, I do see that this reflects the removal of phase two, which takes out a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but the most expensive phases, one and three, remain intact and those could also be, come in much larger once they're put out the bid.
They could.
Okay. And, and, I mean, I may be asking you to take a shot in the dark here, so if I am, don't feel compelled to answer, do you have any idea how much more we could be looking at?
Okay, one of the things that we typically do, if something comes in too high, over budget, we'll value engineering. Uh, we will go back in and say, okay, maybe we don't need this and maybe we don't need that. And that ends up to be, so it's, to say that, you know, we won't have any choice, isn't really the case, we'll have a choice, it's just won't be what we designed.
So you have in your mind sort of what might have to go first if we get a less-than-ideal, you know, scenario? Okay. I, well, that, that is what I wanted to hear, just to make sure that we don't find ourselves painted into a corner. I know particularly because, you know, if we go a little bit over on, say, the Thomas and George Street, that can come out of capital reserve.
Mm-hmm, correct.
The sewer projects cannot.
Sewer projects cannot.
So in, in a way, and I know that it doesn't always work this way, I'd like the sewer projects to come out first.
Mm-hmm.
Because they've gotta be all ARPA as opposed to, you know, um, Thomas and George Street.
Right.
Good.
All right, so let's just work ourselves down the list, if that's okay, um, with the, the strike-throughs. So improvements to Homestead Park, um, that's at two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. Um, now, two-hundred thousand of that is for the, um, the play surface, eighty thousand dollars was what we, what, um, the playground equipment, um, that we didn't realize was gonna be an issue this fiscal year, so we, we added it to, or we're proposing to add it to, to next fiscal year. Um, I've struck that we can put, we can utilize eighty thousand from the capital reserve for the playground equipment, 'cause I think that's something that has to be done.
Or a head call.
Has to be, to be done. Um, there is also a possibility, um, that that can be, um, done this fiscal year as I'm going through the budget amendment. So, um, but the two-hundred thousand play surface, I, I'm not sure what your thoughts are on that, if that's something that you would like done, do you wanna use capital reserve, do you wanna table the project? Um, so that one is, is really up for more discussion.
May I ask you a preliminary question? Um, so, 'cause I see that, you know, what, you know, some things you've said, recommend to pay from capital reserves, so based on your recommendations here, how much of the capital reserve are, are we dipping into, how much would we have left?
So, um...
Based on the way you've got it recommended here?
Yep, yep, absolutely. So right now, um, I only have, uh, those two, Toba ten-fourteen and ten-fifteen, so about five hundred thousand, uh, coming from the, the capital reserve. Remember, we just put a million plus in the capital reserve, so we can take, we can take more. It, it's at a healthy level.
I, I think that's one of the things that I've been wrestling with in my mind, um, and probably all of us have been about, you know, we wanna... you know, we wanna be responsible with our capital reserves, but this is an opportunity to commit some money at today's dollars before potentially more inflation 10 years from now, whatever.
Correct.
So this is a today opportunity. I don't wanna be, you know, typically pretty conservative financially in my own dealings, but I see an opportunity here. And so that's why, you know, we've got four, over four million of capital reserves. You know, what is the comfort level of, of how much of that do we spend? I mean, for myself, I'm feeling like, hey, if we've got three million in capital reserves, we're doing pretty good.
I would agree.
And so I backed my way into saying, I think we've got a total of about a million dollars of capital reserves to look at using.
I, I agree, and I, I would just add the point that I'm far more comfortable using capital reserve for these vehicles than I am financing them through debt right now.
Agreed.
I, I think that it's much more prudent, I think it actually is the more conservative option to, to use capital reserve at this time.
Totally on the vehicles, I'm thinking about then, in addition, I was trying to get a, you know, because I'm looking, okay, we got about 500,000 dedicated to that, so that might leave us another 500,000 in capital reserves that we can kinda dedicate to some of these that have been reduced is what I'm talking about.
Does that include the 135 that we're committing? The, the other part?
No, that, that, that does not.
Okay.
That does not. That's, that's, that's added to it.
So it's a little less than another 500,000?
But, you know, we, again, you can, we transferred almost a million 50,000. You're at 4.4. So leaving 3 million is not being, I think is being still financially responsible.
And of course, we have to, you know, temper ourselves a little bit because if, if we do approach, if we spend 1.4 million dollars and we leave 3 million, when we're ba, all back here a year from now, we have significantly less wiggle room because another 1.5 million is half the capital reserve, which we certainly would not want to spend. So that's something to think about. But it certainly, I can say from my own perspective, on these vehicles, I'm 100% on board.
So am I. I think it's a wise use of our capital, and I would never borrow money at these rates if we didn't absolutely have to.
Yeah, I totally agree on the vehicles, I think.
So do I.
All right, very good.
I, I agree on the vehicles too. I, I also think that we need to put the playground equipment back in somewhere in, in the Homestead Park. Whether that's with this year's dollars or whether that comes out of capital, because like you said, we have four point, almost 4.5 million in there, which is well over 20% of our budget in reserve. So, you know, I, I think that's a little high to keep in reserve, especially in years past since we've had much less than that. I'm not saying spend it down to zero, but I think we do have some opportunities here to use some of that money because we're spending a lot of money on infrastructure, which we can't see. It'd be nice to be able to have some projects which we can see. You know what I mean? And, and use some of that capital reserve for that.
Well, Steve, I, this is Jim, I, I was sort of tracking, tracking what Director Moody was saying, and, and I think that if, if, like, I could be on board with what you're saying about put the playground equipment in Homestead Park. Now, whether or not the director finds that we've got excess money to do that with or capital reserve, I would be comfortable leaving it to her to make a recommendation on our budget amendment. But I'm definitely down with and in favor of the new playground equipment in Homestead Park.
I am too.
Because she was estimating around an 80 grand figure in that range.
So what I would.
Yeah, because in the, because in the renovation, we took out the equipment, we need to put it, put it back. I mean, you know, that was a detriment, but they, they've lost something now to put the renovation there for parks. So I think we need to put that back. And, and even so, like you said, you know, with the, you know, 1022, which is the Thomas Street thing, we talked about that, and you know, Jake brought that up about, if, if that goes over budget and, and, you know, Mr. Small said, well, then we can reevaluate that. But, you know, again, we have some capital reserve in there, and, and I think that's a project that needs to go, especially with the 250 apartments going into the mall. Those people that wanna go to downtown Bel Air, they're probably gonna use, a lot of them are gonna use Thomas Street. So I, I think that's a project that, that has to be done also.
So I would recommend for the, for the 80,000 that we're talking about with the playground equipment, we're gonna, I'm gonna put that back or keep it in the 25 budget, funded from capital reserve. If, when I'm done the budget amendment for 24, it can be funded there, it doesn't hurt that it's in the 25 budget. It just comes out during a budget amendment. It's not hurting anything at, at all. So that's what I would recommend to, to you all, okay?
Good.
The, so I guess we're back to the, so we've got, we've got Homestead Park playground surface. On the flip side of this page, you've got Plum Tree Park playground surface. You've got Burns Alley. So those are the, the three I think that just need direction from, from you all. Do you, do you want that those two parks, the playground surfaces done on those two, two parks? Do you want one done this year, one done next year? You know, it, the other thing is, is you can, we can always put these projects in the budget, funded from capital reserve. They're gonna go out to, to, to bid, you know. If they come back, and it's gonna come before you, and if it's something that you decide, no, don't want it, don't want to do that, then again, it's not hurting the budget. It's on both sides of the equation. We're not spending current year revenues for it. So just because you all are making decisions now of what's going in the budget, it's not locking you in. These, these items, because they're such major projects, are gonna have to come back before you. You know, maybe it helps, I think what I'm hearing is, is the, the Thomas Street and George Street project is, is a priority. I mean, this one has been on the books for 2011, a very long, long time. Costs are just gonna continue to increase. We've got a great opportunity now to get this project done. And I, and I funded phase one and phase three, not phase two, because those were the two priorities that I heard from Kevin, that if he had to prioritize them, those were his priorities. And that's certainly not to say we can't come back and fund phase two at a later date with capital reserve.
Yes, is everybody aware of what phase one and phase two, phase three are? Because phase three is the commercial portion of Thomas. That is the area in front of Bagabonds and, and along there. And then phase one is the residential portion. That's where the most of the work is because that's where you're reducing back the road, getting rid of the chicane, all that kind of stuff. And then two is George Street. George Street, it makes it very easy to do it because it's not really connected to the other one, the other two.
So I think the question is, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I, I, I am in favor of your recommendation on Thomas Street with the project here. And, and my understanding is that's, that's funding 890,000 dollars out of ARPA, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's, that's my view of it. I'm definitely in favor, I think, I think it's gonna be a, a, a really nice boon to the town to continue, for all of the reasons that have been articulated, you know, before about the, the great way that it can help tie the town together in a, in a pedestrian and, you know, the whole, the whole look, everything, I think it's a significant plus.
Yeah. If the county can come in behind that and create that connection from the end of Thomas to the Maupin Trail, that would be spectacular.
Have, have you talked to them about that at all, or where do they stand on it, or you don't know?
For years.
Madam Chair.
And we, that was our request through Parks and Rec.
We did, in March of last year, submitted an FY25 capital request with that suggestion in mind. I haven't talked to Mr. Magnus recently, but I did get a second-hand report from the Maupin Trail Committee that they are still studying the, the, that proposal. So no decision's been made on it as yet.
Thank you.
And this is Steve, and with respect to what Mr. Moody had talked about, about putting these projects in, listing them under capital reserve, we can put bids out. And if they don't come out, you know, we don't have to, we, we don't have to, you know, accept the bids and, and all. I, I think we probably ought to put something in there for Burns Alley. If the, if the county does what they talked to us about, about potentially raising the, the old Hys property there, if they're using it as storage, and making that into like a, a park to help support the town. You know, the sprucing up of Burns Alley would be something to put on, you know, to, to go in line with that. So I don't know if that'll pay out this year, you know, because we, we wouldn't wanna put a little facelift on Burns Alley that would look, that would blend in with whatever the county was gonna do with that, that property with the old Hys and, and better liquor supply. So maybe we're gonna put a, you know, a little piece in there for that. And we talked about 100,000, I don't know your, your guess on that, but, but again, if it doesn't come to fruition, we don't have to approve the contract. So it's really kinda no harm to put some of these things in, in my opinion, on the, on the capital reserve side for some of these projects. So, you know, even putting in Homestead and, and Homestead resurfacing and the Plum Tree Park resurfacing, you know, we can put those in, and, but again, like you said, like Lisa said, we don't have to approve.
That's a good point. That's a good point. I, I also am in favor of some sprucing up of Burns Alley, but not, you know, the half a million dollars. But something to make it more palatable as a continuation space for events that the Alliance has. I think that would be a reasonable thing to do. I, I'm not a big fan of the 200,000 for Homestead and then the, what, 500,000 for Plum Tree for the resurfacing. 300, I'm sorry, together they were 500,000, that's what I was thinking. That is just a tremendous amount of money, and we already have an ADA compliant playground. I'm, I'm just, I'd like to see how they weather and how, how it goes at Shamrock for a while before we commit a half a million dollars to it of, of town funds. Because we, we have a playground, then we'll have, have a playground. It's not really, to me, I don't know.
I might be able to help a little bit with that. The cost that I came up with these two projects, Homestead and Plum Tree, were based upon Shamrock. Shamrock's cost for installing the edging and the, the, the play surface was 180,000. The one advantage now, to Homestead over Plum Tree is that the equipment's not there. So the, the installer can put in the surface and the equipment at the same time, and they're not kind of moving their equipment around existing play, uh, play structure. So if there was one of those that was likely to be less than the estimate, it's likely to be the Homestead one.
And as far as Burns Alley, I mean, I definitely hear what Steve is, is saying, but I whispered over to, to Kevin, and instead of arbitrarily putting a number in the budget, I would wait and let's, again, have a further.
I think that's a good idea, more details, right, right.
And so.
So we have some idea how much it would cost to do whatever we decide we wanna do.
And, and if we know we're gonna, we're gonna utilize capital reserve or whatever the case is, we know it's not ARPA, then we can figure that out at that point in time. So my recommendation would be if, if you all aren't, aren't ready to go forward with what is being proposed, then let's just cut it, but let's have further discussions at a work session about it sooner rather than later so that, you know, we can, we can make some headway on that project.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. Steve, are you okay with that?
Yeah, yes, I'm okay with that. I mean, I have no idea what the number would be, that's like, you know.
Got it.
Whether we do, whether we have some preliminary drawings drawn up, put some money into that, you know, let's go through the process. I'm not really familiar how that would all go, but, you know, I have no, I don't have a firm number to know what it would cost.
So that was, that was Lisa's suggestion, since we don't really have a firm number to strike it entirely, but sort of keep it on the back burner, and then we can fund it through capital reserves if that's what we decide we wanna do. Once we get a better idea of a cost.
One other, I'm sorry, one other thing, sorry. We may want to expend some effort on Burns Alley to get, right now it's been my sketches. And it's hard to base a number on, you know, sketch work. So maybe what we can do is do what I would call design development drawings for that, along lines that you guys have seen and, and approved, and then we can kind of create something that somebody can price. Does that make sense?
And again, I think that's a discussion for another date, but an idea of how to move forward on that.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good.
I was just wondering, do you, are you suggesting maybe, Kevin, that we could put some kind of a design fee in this budget? Or are you okay with waiting to sort of study the thing? And, or are you thinking we gotta take the next step to study?
I'm okay either way.
Okay.
Either one, you choose to, because one of the things about Burns Alley, you're waiting on other folks. You're waiting on that gas pump. You're waiting on the, the county to decide what they really wanna do there. And I, and that may change the design.
It's a lot of ifs to put a dollar figure on it, yeah.
Yeah, and but, my view is that, you know, by not making a commitment right now in the capital reserve, we're leaving that in the capital reserve, you know, and, and the decision can be certainly made after more, more information is gathered on it, so.
Certainly what I'll do is try to put another sketch together that I haven't had time to do. I've been promising it, but I, I'll put that together for your reaction so that way you kind of know, you can look at that and say, oh yeah, this is kinda what I was thinking of.
The great thing about the capital reserve is that it's always there.
Correct.
So, you know, we, we do have some flexibility, we do have some options once we have something in front of us.
Absolutely.
If, if I could, Luke, back to your question about, to the chair about the, you know, what, what are we gonna do about these other park surfaces? I was thinking as we analyze things, maybe if we could first talk about, I'm comfortable with the item where the Comfort Station at William Street Trailhead gets paid from capital reserves.
That, that was last year.
Okay, that was last year, that's done, so that's off the list, okay.
This is all the ARPA projects?
No, so that is one.
That's off, totally.
Jimmy stole my thunder there, but, no, I wanted to bring that up. It's not bolded because it's not an FY25.
Gotcha.
But I didn't want to forget about it. That is in FY24, it is in FY24 to be funded from ARPA.
Right.
But with trying to balance everything, I thought, well, this could probably be funded from capital reserve. So I removed it from ARPA. Eddie, do you know where that project stands by any chance?
Yes, they're still in the engineering design phase of a Comfort Station. I'm not sure what is involved with engineering a toilet, but that's essentially where we're at.
It's like a box with a.
Yes, I'll, I'll reserve, but yes, maybe it's, it's still engineering and design.
So really, no dollars are gonna go out the door in fiscal year '24. It's not even gonna be constructed in the next six weeks. So it's gonna become a 25 project. So with that in mind, that is gonna be an FY25 budget amendment, that we're gonna add this project to the 25 budget. We'll add it back into town buildings, and, but we'll also add it to be funded from capital reserve.
Got it.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, that, that helps a lot, appreciate that.
And, and we're freeing up the ARPA money that was committed to fund it in '24 to balance ARPA for '25.
Yep, yep, it is freed up with this new recommendation analysis.
And that's all reflected here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
So that, sort of the next part of my question then, after that point of analysis to the chair is, would you feel comfortable with applying capital reserve to do the surface on, you know, one of these?
If I had to pick one, I'd. If I had to pick one, I'd pick Homestead because it's got no play equipment on it, so it should be easier, cheaper.
It also, you have equipment already on Plum Tree. I would have to take out equipment to make, to put in handicapped inclusive equipment. Whereas Homestead, I'm actually going to meet with the rep from Cunningham Recreation. They'll go in and they'll go, okay, I'm going to remove this from the design, and that will become something that is handicapped inclusive, which, so what I'm saying there is whether or not there is a poured and placed play surface there, depends, the play structure depends on that. You know what I'm saying?
So I, you know, I tend to be with the chair on this issue. I could be amenable to splitting the baby on it and-
As could I.
Bringing in Homestead.
All right, so we're going to keep Homestead, the play surface funded from capital reserve. We're going to remove totally from the budget Plum Tree Park.
I think I, I'm in favor of that. I think, yeah, so Commissioner Chance and I think are on the same page thinking about this handicap, you know, accessible things. At least we start to get a step in the right direction-
Yeah.
-with Homestead project on that.
It makes sense to do it now.
Yeah.
It does make sense to do it now, although all of our parks are handicap, ADA compliant.
They're accessible.
Right.
Yes.
They're not, yeah.
We're talking about improving, no, I don't mean to suggest that whatsoever.
Just for the members of the audience listening at home, they are all-
Absolutely, absolutely. No, we're talking about an enhancement.
Exactly.
And a valuable enhancement.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Go with that if you can. Go with that if you can.
All right, so we're making progress here. So Toba 1007, that's Homestead, 280 capital reserve. All right. Toba 1014, the patrol vehicles, capital reserve. 1015, DPW vehicles, capital reserve. 1020 is the sewer. So all, that's all in. That is the estimates that Steve's provided with the additional studies Steve for fiscal year 25 for the, kind of the next set of stations whenever in the future. So everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Toba 1022, we are removing Phase Two entirely, and we're maintaining Phase One and Phase Three through ARPA. And again, obviously, seeing where the bid comes back. Toba 23, 1023, rather, we're going to add that to the 25 budget in town buildings as well as capital reserve. Toba 1038, we didn't really talk about it, but that's the sewer vehicle replacement that will be funded through ARPA. Toba 1031 and 1032, we are removing those projects from the budget in its entirety.
That is my understanding.
I'm on board with that.
Perfect.
Okay, sound good.
So I'm looking at all of the capital reserve items. So I've got 135 from the capital projects on that sheet.
Yep.
I've got 280 from Homestead Park. Is that right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
I've got 170 from the patrol vehicle replacement.
Correct.
I've got 330 from the DPW.
Correct.
And I've got 175 from the trail improvement.
Correct.
And so altogether, that's 838,000 dollars. And so that's, you know, if we're saying we've got about a million that we're willing to play with, that then gives us 160,000 dollars of breathing room if, say, the Thomas Street improvements-
Correct.
-go wacko.
Yep.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. I think that's a good plan. Okay. All right. Okay, so those are all budget amendments going on. And then we have the, I'm just summarizing now. Adding 1,000 to the Hartford County Education Foundation, adding 5,000 to the fire company. We, of course, have the savings on the MML dues, the savings on IT. We're moving 15,000 and 25,000 from the dimmable lights and the weigh finding from capital reserve to current year revenues by reducing real property taxes. And that is all I have.
All right.
And then I'm going to spread the 3.5% cost of living amongst all the departments. So that'll be a budget amendment. That'll happen in the sewer fund. You'll see a budget amendment for that, as well as the general fund. You'll see a budget amendment for that.
And the 3.5% is parked somewhere in this budget.
It is. It's in the miscellaneous department.
That's what I wanted to let everyone know, because I know sometimes we, I have had questions of, what is this giant number in the miscellaneous? And it's where you park 3.5% until we say yes, and then you spread it throughout the departments.
Wanted to correct myself. My math was a little off.
I didn't check your math.
No, but I, I mean, it's, I missed one of the figures. I think I missed the 175 figure. It's, we're actually looking from the capital reserve, just under 1.1 million, which is a little less good, but I think still fine.
I think it's still fine. I mean, again, we were talking roughly to get back to 3 million.
Yeah.
So that left you with 1.4 with a little bit of wiggle room.
Which is still enough breathing room to cover Thomas Street.
It is, it is.
But I did just want to correct if there are any math teachers from Bel Air High listening to check my work. 1.1 is the figure.
And I do want to also mention, just making sure, again, we're all on the same page. The FY24 budget does have us using 432,000 from the capital reserve. However, historically, we've always put something in the capital reserve from revenues being over expenditures. Not a million, but, so that doesn't concern me. So I just, just wanted to make sure you all realized that, that there is 400,000 sitting in 24 to be utilized from capital reserve, working on the 24 budget amendment like I mentioned. So there's a possibility we won't need to take all of that from the capital reserve, but confident that we'll be putting a little something back in the capital reserve as we've done historically throughout the years since we've had the capital reserve. So I'm not alarmed from it, and I just didn't want you all to be either.
Okay.
All right. All right. You good?
So we are, we are balanced?
Yes, ma'am. I will make us balanced.
I know you will.
Have no fear.
I'm glad that you have that job of balancing the budget amendments there. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I-
We have, we looked at this.
I, before I move to adjourn, I just want to thank Lisa so much.
I want to thank Lisa so much. I, we have managed to get through all the ARPA projects and all the other issues that we had and finished, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for all of your assistance as well.
So I think the citizens of Bel Air, those who are watching and those who will watch, can rest assured that they have really the best that there is to offer in the professional field leading their town, particularly in the finance department.
Absolutely.
So with that important disclaimer having been made, I will move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.